Good morning, good morning, good morning. Go ahead and get this started once Mr. McIntyre. Just kidding, Brad. I know it's going to cost me. Welcome to the special meeting of the Yuba City City Council here on May 19th, 2021, where we will be discussing our city priorities in advance of development of the city's budget for 2021, 2022. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. The governor has declared a state of emergency to existing California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor has also issued Executive Order N-3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including the canceling of large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in this meeting? The meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment on your device. The question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of the Zoom screen that is on the bottom of your screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During public comment period, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions. As once the public hearing is closed, or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boobengarden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Couple of things, because this is a special meeting, and it is being broadcast live, just make sure we're all aware of that, and as we move forward. Second is, this is the time before we get started for public communication on items of the agenda, the appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the city council and the planning commission concerning any item that has been described in the notice of this meeting, consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing. Well, at least it's Frank.
I like it.
Was he, was that the new Yuba City theme song?
I would hope so.
Okay, good. We're off to a great start. If, if, if an attendee does not have a facial covering, one can be provided. Comments may be made at the council chamber podium. Please participate via the web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. At this time, do we have any comments from the public? Not seeing any in the audience online?
No public comments.
No comments. So, general items, facilities workshop. Before I turn this over to the city manager, it's a couple of things. It's, this year, as we have begun to deal with the aftermath, hopefully, the aftermath of COVID-19, and as we present a 2021, 2022 budget for the council's approval, it's important for us as a council to once again reconvene with the help of the public and establish what our priorities are going to be. We're making a slight shift. This used to be a goals and priorities, but in reality, it seems more appropriate. What are the city's priorities? And the idea here is, is that as things come to the city and to staff, they, they can balance those against what those priorities are. It should make things a little more clear as we move forward with many of the decisions that we're going to have as, as we move forward in this next fiscal year. So, the idea here is to take advantage of our very professional staff and provide them with the, the priorities that, that we see as, as, as the council with the public's input. And that should help direct us and, and direct them to be focused laser-like on, on doing the best that we can for the, the community that we serve. I'm sure we'll have plenty of other comments as we move along. I'm excited to have this meeting. I know Mr. Lopez will be here once again, providing excellent facilitation, but at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. It seems like we were just here. Oh, that's right, we were just here, just a little over 12 hours ago. So, with that, I want to start off, I want to thank Juan for being here. Juan will take over after I take the opportunity to kind of walk the council and the public through kind of the 2018, 2019, or 2019, 2020, 2021, goals and priorities. And my goal today is to try and update, to the extent possible, all of the accomplishments. I will not touch them all, so if I miss something or you have a question, please stop me, and I will try to either track that information down. The team did a very good job of, of providing me a lot of updates, but if I go through this on a line-by-line item, we'll probably have lunch around 3:00. So, with that, today's agenda, this is the welcome section, the agenda review, which is really going through, you know, kind of where we're going to start, at goals and objectives and next steps. So, 2018, 2019 priorities, priorities and objectives recap, I'm going to jump into that here momentarily. And then from there, we're going to talk about the priority work session, which is where Juan will come in. And I have taken the feedback that you had provided Juan and put them into what I saw as potential priorities for, for review, consideration and discussion. We're going to break for lunch, 12:00 to 12:30, and then reconvene at 12:45 to finish up that, that part of the workshop and work on next steps, and then leave 10, 15 minutes for closing comments and direction from, from council and public and others. And so, I don't want to jump into Juan's piece of it, so I'm going to leave that to him when it's his turn. Also provided in the lobby, as well as copies to each of the council, are the 2018, 2020 priorities, as well as the objectives that were being worked on. So, those are there for your review, and I'm just going to be adding to those as we go through. 2019, 2020, public safety, safe community, ensuring the highest level of public safety. Some objectives under that were the priority, prioritized staffing, public safety, community awareness, emergency preparedness, and, and the one that was probably not added in 2020, but probably later on, was this whole thing called COVID. I know everyone's shocked that that was part of it. Some of the things that occurred under this particular goal and objectives, police department created their own, own website, which I think is hugely successful and allows them the opportunity to, to reach out to the community from their perspective. The fire department redesigned their website, which also expanded their information available to public through social media. They've, we have a public information process that the fire has gone through, and I know chief had to step out for a second, but I want to give kudos to him. We've got multiple people that are part of the Public Information Officer Program. Fire department was involved in National Preparedness Month. We've conducted Code Red training for dispatchers. We've conducted citywide Code Red testing, which I think is valuable as we went through, you know, part of this was responding to the dam situation, and this Code Red really created, you know, an opportunity for us to become more informed and better at that piece of communicating with our public. We're facilitating tabletop exercises for department operations centers, as, as the chief would call them, DOCs, for extreme weather conditions. You might see notes coming out like red flag warning, you know, we, we might have high fire danger, there might be things that are occurring. Those are all generated through, you know, the DOC operations. Built a continuity and government plan for each department. Completed baseline training for city employees. We've got some highly trained staff folks, especially as we start to head towards any situation that would take us into an EOC. But COVID, near and dear to our hearts. That stopped, you know, kind of what was happening and stopped the team and had to refocus our, our priorities as an organization. So, created the department operations to manage city emergencies to respond to the pandemic. Continued to provide essential services through ongoing responses to the pandemic. Implemented protocols to protect the health and safety of staff and the community. Coordinated with other agencies to maintain consistent communication and messaging to the public. Provided support to the county department of operations during staffing challenges. Lot went on in this area, and probably a lot I've missed, and so I apologize to PD and fire for all that they did, and as well as the public works and rest of the staff, because I know there, I did that in about three minutes, and it's probably a half hour and, or an hour's worth of work that was done in there. A second priority, physical stability. Maintain and enhance physical stability of Yuba City. So, a lot going on with COVID. You know, there was a lot of things that went on with, with review of staffing, you know, the council had asked, and the, and the staff responded with reduction in staff and, and providing budget adjustments to see how we would survive through the rest of the fiscal year, and they responded. Budget ad hoc committee review, which is now in its second year, has been successful, and we look forward to bringing forward a draft budget to the workshop next Tuesday that is a work of, of the, all the department heads and Spencer and his team, who have done a wonderful job in creating that. Our department heads remain frugal in 21, 20 and 21. They've done a great job of managing their budgets, as well as their staff, and still creating a service level that is second to none, in my opinion. City continues to maintain its 15% healthy cities reserve, and the city will be able to fund some unmet general fund needs in 21, 22 and 22, 23, as a result of things that we had unanticipated that went better than expected. Sales tax was better than we thought, property taxes are a little better than we thought, which I think will help us create an opportunity in our general fund to do some funding that has been long overdue. One that was approved last night, Bok Stewart Master Tax Exchange Agreement. I think that is a huge success. That will be huge for the organization, it'll be huge for this community as we move forward. This council approved it last night, county takes it on on the 25th. From there, we will be headed off to LAFCO, and from LAFCO, we will start the process. Some of the things that we're, we were creating is, is, you know, improving some of, you know, managing and stabilizing, justifying water and sewer rates, evaluating and enhancing relationships with allied agencies. I think the Bok Stewart Master Tax Exchange Agreement, you know, really sort of speaks largely to the ability to work through a long and drawn-out process. This process started long before these priorities and goals were put into play. Organizational culture, foster culture, and customer service transparency and accountability. There's a lot going on here. Fire department created a mental health task force. If you were here just a little bit earlier, you would have saw Fire and Human Resources implemented a Stop the Bleed program, that I'm not sure how many people that is trained, but it's, I think it's still ongoing, but it's a number of folks in the city, as well as the ability, we have these kits throughout to be able to do emergency Stop the Bleed programs if something was to occur, and the chief done a really, did a really good job, and we got a lot of support from his staff in order to do that. It's a great opportunity. We have nine city, nine kits throughout city locations. A couple of things that did occur in 2020 and 2021 was we did have, we did have our employee appreciation dinners. So, we had one in February, just right before the COVID hit, 2020. And then if, for those who participated, we just had one just recently outdoors, which I thought was hugely successful, out at the water treatment center on North Cape. It was a great opportunity for us to get back into what our mission and vision is as an organization, and recognize employees who keep the city rolling on a day-in and day-out basis. As we look forward, and, and it's part of being worked on now, and as we start to evaluate what our new priorities are from the council, we will be looking at workforce, workforce planning and development to support the employees and the organization moving forward. Business-friendly, I know that's a term that I've used quite a bit, and I know that with councils used it as open for business. So, I think this is critical as we move forward, some of the successes that we need to turn towards, and some of the relationships that we continue to build. Review the city's development impact fees, general plan and zoning code updates, branding and marketing, process improvement and development. This is a long list. In March 2020, the council authorized the reduction of development impact fees, including water sewer connection fees and extension fees to match current infill development and impact fees. March 2020, council adopted an overhead utility policy. May 2021, the city council rescinded the city's 2005 growth policies. Huge success. June 2021, still to come out, it is anticipated that the city will replace the city's levy impact fees with the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency's proposed regional levy impact fees, which is, represents a huge reduction. Development impact fees, and we continue to work with our partners, like the unified, Yuba City Unified School District, but those represent, those things I mentioned represent, we are open for business, we are business-friendly, and we are looking forward to putting housing and businesses back in our city. Enhance partnerships, strengthen and develop partnerships within our region. Workforce development, regional partnerships, community engagement. Regional partnerships, homeless liaison officer is actively working with all allied agencies and civic agencies. City staff and assisted in Sutter County Hazard Mitigation Plan and created an appendix for Yuba City. City staff has been involved with Sutter County Flood Control Response Project Exploration for regional opportunities to share infrastructure facilities and reduce environmental impacts and costs. Partnering with allied law enforcement agencies to share resources such as SWAT, NET-5 and gang activities. Police department continues to utilize and recruit for volunteers to assist in their efforts on a day-to-day basis. We continue to engage citizens and adopt a park and other volunteer opportunities. Quality of life, maintain and enhance our quality of life. Clean and safe neighborhoods, parks and rec and arts, and public outreach. You can imagine this was a difficult effort, you know, during the time of COVID, because of all the things that were going on, but there were things that got done. City received $178,000 Prop 68 per capita grant in fall of 2020 to promote and expand program and community events in neighborhoods such as festivals and special events. Currently, the parks and recreation department have been ramping up under the new, under the new guidelines, and Brad and his staff are doing an excellent job of creating and developing programs. I will tell you that if I brought Brad up here, he would tell you his big issue is getting people to support that from an employee standpoint. Finding part-time employees to support these programs is very difficult. Infrastructure, identify and address infrastructure, our infrastructure financial needs. Goal seven. Investment, community involvement, physical infrastructure, fix and maintain roads. March 2021, we received a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant from SECOG totaling $3.1 million. March 2021, received $3.7 million in grant from SECOG for the Walton Area Improvement Project. March 2021, received $300,000 grant from SECOG for the Butte House Road Completion Project. Currently, Parks and Rec are working on replacing playground equipment at San Brandon Park. Part of the bridge project received $2.8 million in local partnership programs and grants for CDC for widening Bridge Street in between Gray and Cooper. New park at Harder Park is in, or new park at Harder Road is in design. I forgive kudos to Diane and her team for those grants. That, that's a remarkable effort that went on, and that's a remarkable amount of money that will be coming into our community to be able to widen Walton, put in sidewalks, do things for safety, do things for precautionary things, as Councilman Kirchner always brings up to me, that's a, that's a very unsafe area, but we'll be widening those roads, putting in turn sections, contemplating signals at Cherry and Walton, but also putting an improved sidewalk, which I think is going to be greatly, greatly received and a great opportunity. And that's just one area. Homelessness and vagrancy. Work with regional agencies to address homeless, work on vagrancy and blight. Dedicated staff, as we talked earlier, we do have homeless, you know, we have a homeless liaison officer that works diligently with others to try and make sure that we're trying to reduce and create opportunities for our homeless to get a hand up, not a hand out. There's camping ordinances that we partnered with Sutter County on to put the campground on Second Street, which is a, allows for folks to have overnight camping. And again, I think this is just continuing to work through, this council took on last night, a supportive, a regional housing effort to try and promote, you know, affordable housing and bring additional affordable housing into our community. During this time, New Haven had opened, which is a new area there off Garden Highway, yet another example of work that's being done to help and, and, you know, try to reduce the amount of impacts on that area. And I know I didn't hit anything or hit everything, I hit a lot of things, but I would be entertain questions from council or the public with regards to what I just talked about.
We'll start first. Thank you. Amazing amount of accomplishments, in my opinion, given what has been going on with the challenges of COVID and the other things. I, I also would, don't want to not acknowledge anybody or anything, but the amount of grant funding that the city has received, as far as I'm concerned, is, is absolutely phenomenal. It would be interesting to calculate the total dollars received at some point, and just let people understand the magnitude of that, and the ability for this city to go out and apply for and receive funds, which in instances, their tax dollars coming back for the benefit of the community. I think we, there's a couple of things I want to mention before I turn it over to my colleagues. Number one is I think that one of the big issues that, that began was our ability or our challenge of establishing or re-establishing relationships with our, our regional partners. And I know sometimes people take a dim view of the concept of being regional, but I think it's huge. And, you know, our, our ability for our council and our staff to participate in local committees and, and such, I think, you know, represents the city very well. And I think it's very important for us to make sure that, you know, we have those regional relationships. And I'll, I'll, I'll miss the quote, but Chairman of the Board Flores last night commented, you know, he has not witnessed in his seven years, a, a better cooperative relationship between the city and the county, which is, which is what it should be. You know, we're always going to think alike, but as we embrace and try to deal with an unprecedented and unique opportunity that's going to be in front of us with an abundance of dollars flowing in through the various federal and state monies, it's very important to leverage that regionally and, and use that to the best, the best efforts that we can put forward. And that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be selfish to Yuba City. I, I made that comment myself last night. We need to make sure we take care of ourselves, but we are a member of a, of a community. One thing I do want to mention is, and we'll talk more about that, is the, the notion of business-friendly or open for business. I know that the vice mayor and Councilman Kirchner are leading a task force on business retention. I think that's something that's, it's getting to go, and I know that we will have some deliverables from that as well. But with that, just a wonderful thank you to the staff. Can't imagine having to deal with the last year, and not only just keeping the place open for business, but the stuff that you did to continue to deliver services. I just don't get a lot of com, or negative comments, and if you, again, look at the achievements, to me, it's, I'm, I'm just proud, proud of our staff, so. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you said it well. Mr. Vaughn, I was sitting here going, as you were going through your list, and I think we get caught up a lot with just the day-to-day things, and when you stop and you really look at what all we've gotten done in two years, it's not this, not this five up here, it's you guys, the department heads, all the employees. So, massive thank yous, because we've all worked together, and there's been a tremendous amount of work that's gone forward, and you're the glue that keeps this city going. And major thank yous, a lot of work ahead of us, but thank you, Mr. Vaughn, for putting it together, because I didn't realize we had done as much as we've done in the last few years, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I probably glanced over a couple, but I do want to give a shout out. Department heads have been breaking in, a new city manager for the last three months as well, so kudos to them for putting up with me.
They get hazard duty pay for that one.
Let's not talk about that.
Councilman Kirchner?
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, but I, I, I do appreciate that the, the fact that you pointed out the objective professionalism, leadership and positive attitude by example, is, is our vice mayor has brought up from time to time, that may have been lacking in previous councils, and so I think that was spot on. But I don't have any questions at this time, but just to reiterate what the rest of the councils already said, just kudos to, for the, for the city and the city heads, that, that, the job that they had to do during this difficult time, so thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, would love to take the opportunity just to thank all the department heads and everyone who works for each and every one of you. The results, I think, are palpable when you drive through the city, you look at our numbers also, that we've come through as we emerge from COVID-19. I think it's definitely a win. Put patience to the test, put professionalism to the test, put everything to the test, and I think we came out with our head held high. And we're looking forward to this process, as we can all come and corral our priorities together and move forward together. I would be interested in knowing, well, you or anybody else here has to, I would like to encourage folks to please feel free to contribute. If we're going to make any modifications or alterations or merging of priorities to make things simple for you, whatever is easiest for you, because this is our blueprint moving forward, and if you, we don't want to be bombarded with bullet point after bullet point after bullet point. If we can simplify it, and we all know what it all means, we come to agreement on that. I think it'd be a lot easier for all of us, and include, especially when you communicate that to the rest of your staffs. So, we are definitely an open book to any type of possibility, streamline any of these processes. I have one question, that's a very basic question, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. You made a reference saying it was very difficult to get staff to support recreational programs.
Difficulty hiring individuals.
That's what I was going to clarify.
Yeah, not, not staff supporting.
I didn't hear the word hiring in there.
We, we're doing a lot of hiring for part-time employees, and, and Brad and his team struggle because of the programs that we're trying to ramp up.
Trying, trying to get qualified people to help out, to, to be a part of it and hire them.
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you. That's it. So, thank you very much for everything.
Councilman?
I can't really say much more than what my colleagues have added, and I appreciate to hear their comments. I think, Mark, on the area of regional work that we do, I, I support that fully. I think it's important. In today's world, there's no Yuba City, in particular, when we have businesses that do international work, that we need to be on a regional basis to be able to be competitive. I appreciate the summary of it. It's incredible how you captured everything in a quick two-day moment that you were.
Learning from the city attorney.
Exactly. To, to pull it together and bring us a summary of everything, and I, I really appreciate that. I think that the words that come to mind from our executive team and the community of, who works for the city of Yuba City, there's a strong commitment. I, I saw that even more so within COVID. I saw how much you strive to protect, serve and care for our community. And the value to that, there's no money value to it. I thank you so much for all of the things that you've done for us, not just in 2019, but in 2020, and continuing to do for us. I think that that is a strong, strong part. I also saw this process of being more helpful and extending to community that has challenges with second languages and differences in cultures, and I really admired how our city community staffing stepped up to help. And so, I thank you for, for doing that. And that's part of the, the culture in our community that is valuable. Sitting last night, when we, a group passed the master tax agreement, I almost felt like it was an outer body kind of experience, because I couldn't believe that it was actually happening, but I was also amazed by the journey. And so, that large piece of policy agreement that we passed is accumulation of all the priorities from 2019 and those before us. And so, it's just a privilege to sit here and to be able to. And so, it's just a privilege to sit here and to be able to represent the community. I think today, the value is listening. I have some ideas, you have ideas, where do we come together in those ideas, and then how do we move forward with these priorities? We've done a tremendous job in stepping forward with our public safety, been strong about fiscal stability. Organizational culture, I think we have some work to do, plenty of always, I don't think that's something we stopped. And the business-friendly aspect of development, impact fees, master tax, infrastructure, all those things are strong, moving in that direction. Our partnerships are improved tremendously. The quality of life, there's work, more work to be done. It's always a work in progress. Infrastructure, I think infrastructure is for us to be that, the community that people choose to live in and not necessarily because you land, I mean, I chose to live in Uba City. Some people were born and raised here. Maybe that's a choice, maybe that's not a choice, I don't know. But infrastructure for community housing. And the homeless part, I think we have tackled that quite extensively with Sutter County, with the homeless consortium, with our policing, Better Way, Regional Housing Authority, temporary shelters, ordinances, policing, funding, services. I think we've tackled it quite extensively. Do we need to do more of that? We're on the track to do that. So, I think that putting that in a frame for a picture for us to look at is very nice, and I'm excited about looking at the next set of pictures that we're all going to create together. Thank you.
All right. Any comments from the public? How many people do we have watching?
We have four online.
Good. Okay.
So, Juan would kick me in the shin if I didn't provide some observations as the newest city manager to the city of Uba City. One, the city does not spend enough time celebrating successes. We've had a tremendous amount of successes and the team just goes back to the grind. And so, as we look forward, I would recommend we spend some time pausing and celebrating successes because, as the mayor pointed out, the level of effort that comes on from the department head level is tremendous. And behind those doors at City Hall, they're grinding day in and day out on weekends to create the better environment for our citizens. And so, when we get some wins, I'm going to be promoting, we take an opportunity to promote those successes as we look forward. The other thing is, we probably need a little more frequent updates. And so, as you'll start to hear myself talking, as the team will take back your priorities, we will look to be creating a dashboard based on metrics so that we can give you a more frequent look into what's happening on our priorities list. One of the things I found very shocking as I started to put this together, when Juan called me on Monday and said, "Yeah, you have about a 25-slide presentation you need to do, and you need to give updates, and you need to tell them what's happened, and you need to..." And I went, "Whoa, I haven't even started that yet." Juan emailed the executive team. I had all the information needed. They were tracking it, they were ready, and this, putting this together did not take me a whole lot of time with the thanks of George Barlow and a handful of others, including all of the executive team. But the reality is, is we do need to spend some time providing more frequent updates. I'm going to recommend we do it on a quarterly basis, and we're going to try and match metrics to your priorities so that you have something to measure it against. So, we are actually measuring success based on some real-time data. So, I know that's probably the first time the executive team has heard it in that context, but we will work through that as we move forward. So, what did I see? You guys were all interviewing with Juan, and we took the opportunity, and he provided me the questions and provided me the responses. And so, look what I found. Priorities and goals for 2021, '22. And I'm going to turn it over to Juan here in a second, but, you know, a lot of the same themes that we heard, you know, that we've been going through in 18, 19, 20, and '21, public safety, public works, infrastructure, things like fiber, which is broadband, I reduced it down a little bit, I was typing pretty quickly, water, sewer, roads, community development, smart growth, annexation, diversion, equity, inclusion, quality of life, bike paths, homelessness, customer service. And I read that as our customer service. You know, what are we providing to our customers and making sure that we're doing that at the highest level every day? Business-friendly, retention, expansion, attraction, fiscal responsibility, revenue opportunities, employee engagement, culture, retention, recruitment, I saw a lot of that. I also know that when the executive team provided what keeps them up at night, that was a big part of their process. City communication outreach, one point of contact, consistent messaging, and multiple languages. So, at this point, I get to sit down and listen and take notes and turn this over to Mr. Juan Lopez. But before I do so, did I miss anything on my recap? I read that document like 25 times.
Just nimbleness, adapt on the fly.
You know, I didn't read nimbleness, I'm going to blame Juan on that. That word was not used, but I'll blame him for that one.
I just used it.
But I created it. I didn't spell it. But I appreciate, and it's real. So, I think that's a great part of the business.
Elections have consequences, Dave.
Yeah. So, Juan, you want me to leave that slide up?
Testing. Is it on? Yeah. Okay. So, happy to be here. And this list obviously is not complete, meaning that many of you had a lot of different ideas, but I think this certainly categorizes the prominent themes that popped up amongst you. And so, what I was hoping that we would do as we go through, at least my job in trying to facilitate this, will be to hit each item and then have a discussion. The mayor said that he's also hoping to hear from the staff and maybe other public comments, so that might follow one of those comments as well. But as you're going through them, staff will be recording on the easel chart all the different ideas you have. So, mostly, your job is to help staff by giving them direction around these areas with respect to what you feel are critical components that you would like to see. So, we're going to do that for each one, and I will say that it was the pleasure of the group during the interview that you tried to get to at least six of these key priorities, rather than have 10 or 12. So, we'll have to figure out, once we go through all of these, what are the six that you all will be coming up with? And so, depending on what they are, we will do a voting process, and each of you will decide what your top ones are. And obviously, once we calculate that, we should get the top ones. Now, I've worked with councils enough to know that you will be nimble, I'm sure, in deciding whether or not you want to stay with those six, maybe go down or maybe go up a bit. But I think we'll also have to look at these with respect to what's outstanding from the previous goals and priorities that you established. So, there's some conversation that we'll need to look at. And then ultimately, once we're done here, Dave and the team will take it and they'll start identifying the objectives and the tasks and bring it back to the council, and then you have obviously input and can identify if there's something missing, and then you fine-tune it, and then that becomes your strategic plan for the year. So, with that, when we look at public safety, you, Dave presented a number of accomplishments. And as you think about public safety, and I recall from our interviews, that there are other kinds of things that you were thinking about. So, this is the opportunity to talk more about what, if anything, you want to add to the public safety that may be different, or where your thoughts are. You know, it really is more of a dialogue, trying to build on what you want to see. So, with that...
So, Juan, you need a couple of scribers?
Please.
So, everyone loves Brad's writing, so we're going to put Brad up on one, and then we're going to put Ben up on the other side, so.
I had promised Brad we wouldn't do that, but you, he's your boss.
Yeah. As the mayor said, I will pay for that, I am sure I will. So, but, and we'll switch out as well.
So, public safety. What are your thoughts around, you heard the presentation, based on how we look at 21, '22? What are additional areas you would like to explore? What do you want to see? And we'll just go with however you want to chime in. Councilmember?
Well, within that framework, obviously, right now, we're in the, we're in the process of negotiation with those unions. I think what that means is to make sure that they're paid competitively.
Okay.
And they have the tools that they need to succeed. If you've, if you've spent any time on the Sutter County Grand Jury, and specifically on fire and emergency, and you've toured those fire stations, it's the same report year in and year out, and it's, it's doing a lot with less. And so, it's having the tools that they, that they need to succeed. And that goes, that goes with the police as well.
Okay. Ben, could you add the tools? Oh, you did? Thank you. Can't see it, huh?
I can.
Oh, okay. We'll repeat it back after each section to make sure it captures your items.
Public safety.
This is just public safety right now. Yeah.
So, is this the battle of the flip charts? Are they both having to capture the same thing?
No, they should be looking at each other and deciding who's capturing what, and then go back and forth.
Just making sure.
I can't see his either. It'd be interesting to see.
Ben, can you?
There you go. Other thoughts on public safety?
Yeah, one thing that I think that I would, I would want us to continue to emphasize, and I know we've made some strides, is just the emergency preparedness and actually putting some structure to that. You know, we've got a lot of things going on, but I'm not sure even in our budget where we say, "Here's a, here's a segment for emergency preparedness." We sort of sprinkle it a little bit over here in this department and that department. And in reality, you know, there's a lot of things that could go wrong here, you know, as far as what, what we need to be prepared for as a city. And one of the things that keeps me up at night, obviously going back to my background, is, okay, if we get something that is more than momentary, how are we going to react to that? You know, there's a certain expectation, I think, the public has of a city of this size to be able to handle at least for two to three days in emergency. And I'm not sure that at this point, we have, we have supported, supported that effort or supported our department and our department heads and their staffs in actually preparing for that. Not saying that we haven't, I just would really like to formalize it so that they know that at the end of the day, it is one of the priorities.
Ben, you put that one down? A structure to that? Structure. And in addition to the structure, you're talking about a more comprehensive approach.
Yeah. I just think of focus, again, history would tell you that there was a lot of focus on that. And then I, my impression, and based upon chats with other people, that may have waned a bit. I certainly see a trajectory moving upwards again, which I am very pleased with, but I still think that we really need to say, "Hey, look, this is what the city's capable of doing, understanding what we are capable of doing, and knowing when we need to reach out for help, rather than just have a problem that, that doesn't bode well for those that might be impacted by that problem." It's not throwing shade on any, anything that's going on, it's just, I think we need to up our game.
Okay. More comments?
Looking under public safety, I mean, the mayor's spot on. I mean, the emergency preparedness is definitely one that we saw when we came in the office two years ago that was, was lacking, and it's that cross jurisdictions between the city and the county to make sure that we are prepared to do the things. You know, right off the top is, and these are things we've already been addressing, but it's adequate staffing for safety. And, and we have been addressing these as well, but Councilmember Kirchner called it "tools," but the proper equipment, technology, you know, tools for better, I guess, for a better lack, you know? What are those that's needed? We've been identifying those with police and fire over the past couple of years and trying to step that game up. But there is a huge one in public safety that I think we need to add, especially in light of what's happened over the past year and what just happened in the South in the last few weeks. And that is technology, because cybersecurity, because we saw what the hack into the pipeline did to crippling the oil supply. And if something was to happen to our cybersecurity here, what would that do to the effectiveness of not only PD and fire, but water, wastewater, all the essential services? So, I think cybersecurity has to be addressed in this age under public safety because if it gets crumbled, we could be at a standstill.
Excellent. And I think with tools, I believe I heard updating what those tools may be. So, some kind of analysis of that as well.
Correct. Classic example is the cameras that we just purchased for PD. We went from the old version to the new version that activate when a firearm is pulled as soon as a, there's these different mechanisms, so it's reevaluating on it. We're already doing it, but it's going to be a continual process.
Other thoughts from council members?
Yeah, I would just like to ditto what the mayor said on the emergency preparedness. So, a checkmark on that, that I'm in support of that. The action plan of it, I think what I'm also interested is understanding how the community responds to those emergency prepares, preparedness internally and externally. The retention is important, also tools of technology, I have that as well. One area that I'm hoping that we can enhance our transparency and trust by educating community of understanding what policing and fire are doing, I believe are, there's a lot of effort in that. I would like to see that continue. I would also like to see an expansion of crime prevention and neighborhood watches to help our policing, and in that would also be community policing program focus and objectives. I think that what the fire department doing the simulation activities that you invited community and leaders, I wasn't able to participate in that, I thought that was fantastic. I think for...
I ROP's 101 training.
There you go. For all of those things that are occurring, I think that that's really important for us to continue doing that kind of, kind of work and ensuring the highest level of public safety. I think that that's extremely important in the work for fire and policing.
Ben, you captured the safety piece. Let me, let me, I was going to ask for clarification there. So, you said around community responses, as well as internal and external, are you asking about how they view the work of the city in terms of emergency response?
The emergency preparedness and planning, that we have an action plan internally and how the community responds is...
Okay.
...to different incidents. I don't think it's really clear at this point for our, you know, we're doing the code red signs-ups and all of these things, but how does a community know when to respond to emergency preparedness? So...
Okay. Did that clarify, Ben? And probably that... Response to community hazard plans, so you could put response, but it also suggests that if you're testing out new things and you're providing education, is it working?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
Other thoughts around public safety? Did we capture it all?
If, I don't know, I mean, we're going through different ideas that go into that heading, and I agree with all of them. I don't know if we're, if we're here to establish our goals and priorities, I think those are more at a higher level. We're getting down in the weeds a little bit as examples, but if we're going to consolidate or prepare... But if we're going to consolidate or prepare the list, I definitely it depends on where we put it. But I really like to see since part of our intention here is to have a guideline for establishing the budget, I really think, among many things, of course, but code enforcement should take a higher we should elevate that a little bit. We do not have the staff that we need to do the job right. They're doing the best they can with what they have, but I think that should be there somewhere. And whether we put it under public safety or quality of life, wherever we all decide. But I would love to see that on the list somewhere for future consideration later on today.
Thank you, council members. So, Ben, you have that code enforcement. So the process is high level thinking. And as you go through this, you're you're obviously stressing what's important to you under those topics. And then we'll have that list for each of these bullets. But then you'll vote on which ones you want to move forward with and what number you want. And then staff will come back, taking into account all of these items and develop the task list. And that's where it gets more detailed coming back. And then you you decide as a council, obviously, whether they capture your interests or not. So it'll go back and forth a bit. But the idea is to get your thinking, because you provide the direction to the staff on that.
I think Sean brings up a good point. I think there are some, what I will call wobblers. So if you think about code enforcement, it absolutely is a quality of life issue, right? But it's also a public safety issue. So.
Homeless can be the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, same thing. So I think, you know, as we move through that, we're going to have to it needs to be placed. I just I agree with you 100%. This where it gets placed is one thing. I think typically people think of public safety as police and fire. And and my 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 thoughts on police and fire is, you know, obviously, those are pretty much no brainers as far as tools and staffing and retention and recruitment and all those things, not to diminish it. It's very important. But there's a piece of that that I think is is why I think the emergency preparedness is up is it's there, but it's not there.
Right.
And that's that's my concern is that's really an overarching citywide thing, because if we get into something, all the departments are involved. It's not just police.
It's the same thing what Dave mentioned, the cybersecurity. That's a citywide thing. Yeah, yeah.
No, excellent points, because I think what we find as we move through there is that there's a lot of systemic areas that connect. And I think as you provide direction, that will help them think about the specifics and then maybe one or two more iterations, and then you decide how it fits. So I think some of the council members during the interview said, I think we could move some of these items under one of these headings. And we may do that once we go through the final list. Then you may say, I'd like this item, this item, I want to move it over there. So it's just kind of going back and forth until you feel like you've covered what's important for you.
I have a process question.
Yes.
On on these issues, as you bring them up, we have wonderful members of the of the public in our audience and online. I think it's time to to hear from them a bit, too, if that's OK. I'm sure you were going to do that, but.
Thank you. I wasn't thinking about it, but I appreciate reminding me.
So so Juan, anybody in the audience can utilize the podium there? And then Sierra will, anybody who comments online, Sierra will introduce that into comment.
Nobody online? Not yet?
No public comment.
Nobody in the audience?
I'm hearing code enforcement?
We're widening the we're widening the lanes over there, so we'll help.
OK. If Sierra, if something comes up, let us know. Oh, we got one.
So Tony Dodson says, are we able to share any of our thoughts on priorities? Or are you looking for comments specific to this item?
As we go through each one of the items, if if there is an an item that anybody wants to talk about, but I don't want to jump around, I think there's a system to what's going on here. So if it pertains to public safety or what the the viewer feels is public safety, yes. But if it's one of the others, then I would hold those until that topic comes up.
Was it a comment directed at public safety? OK, thank you. OK, are we ready to move past public safety? A time check. I know you. Oh, we have
You're good. You're good.
OK.
Ready for lunch already?
Times I forget time.
Juan, Juan, I knew what how long it would take you, so I gave you more time.
Oh, gee, thank you. OK, so now we're on to public works. And the items identified, this one was important to many of you, the infrastructure and fiber, water, sewer, and roads were the items that popped up thematically. And again, you know, something could be missed. So what if if you have new thoughts about what you would like to comment on around public works, then then that's also on the table. So who of the council members would like to begin first under public works?
Let's see. I'll kick it off.
Thank you.
So when I look at public works and I go back to the first priority that we had ever public safety, I think back to conversations we had when COVID started. And that is, we've got to get back to what our core mission and purpose is. And that is provide public safety and the infrastructure, roads, water, sewer. When you look at those, and we talk about combining, and I may be jumping way ahead here, Juan, I'm sorry. It's better to ask for forgiveness and permission. You know, I would say you could almost you combine them, public safety and infrastructure, because they are intertwined. Because if we're not providing safe water and sewer, we're Flint, Michigan. If our roads are crap, we're beating up not only our city cars, but everybody else's cars. It prohibits our firefighters and our police officers from getting to the services that are needed. Those are our jobs. Those are job one that we kind of talked about when we had to focus on what we were doing during COVID. And that is provide for the safety, make sure they've got clean water, the roads are as safe as they can be, sewer. I mean, to me, they kind of interweave. And you hit it, water, sewer, roads, and and you've added fiber, you know, or or 5G, whatever technology, that stuff's coming. So that's just my two cents worth.
Concur on that, that public works and is under public safety. It's a huge deal. Plus, I also think that those folks could also play a role in getting the message out when we talk about emergencies preparedness. I've had conversations with the guy that drives that street sweeper. When he added something wrong with the street sweeper, he happened to stop in front of my house. We we talked for 20 minutes. But the point is, when you when you have the interaction, when they have those interactions with with people, whether it's me or whomever, it's not in an emergency basis. He doesn't have a lot of other things to do. So they can definitely play a role in in getting the word out. And they definitely play a role in keeping our community safe, water and roads. What are we going to evacuate on, you know? So it's it's very important. So I agree for the record.
I totally agree with both the gentlemen. I think that what is sometimes unclear is what is the plan to get there? You know, we have general plans and other kinds of plans in the works. But what is that plan? And that's what we're working today. I get that. But develop plans for funding strategic strategies to address these issues. How do we address the issues of of the roads, you know, knowing knowing that we have been awarded this whatever millions of grants, which is really important? And then, you know, water, wastewater, underground work. It's how do we support all of that? So when we have potential developers that we're ready for that to occur if we have a plan in place to to move along the city? Right now, it just seems a little disjointed, but the the work is being done. It's not always clear. It's like, OK, why do why are we widening this street? And why aren't we going over here? You know, how does that all come together?
Priorities and strategies?
Within within the infrastructure. And I do agree. I think public safety and infrastructure, it was on my list. I believe that those could be consolidated.
And Juan, I don't think you you can talk about water and sewer without addressing rates. And 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 what those rates go towards? And that's that's your tie in where you talk about employee retention.
Did you capture that, the rates to sustain the quality services and that you're looking at? OK. Oh, I'm sorry, mayor.
That's OK. I'm easily forgotten. Sorry. A couple of things. Number one, I think that we have deferred a lot of maintenance when it comes to public work. So as it as it relates to priorities, I think we really need to take a hard look at how we not kick the can down the road on some of this stuff that's going to end up causing a lot of cost further on down the road. So as we funnel in all this, not all this, whatever revenues we're getting, I think we really need to make sure that we're programming those in a way that, you know, public works, staff, department head, et cetera, will guide us in regards to that. But I think that's that's something. On the subject of infrastructure consistently here, that one of the one of the barriers to expansion of business and or attraction of business is the fact that there isn't any place for them to necessarily go. We don't have the infrastructure. So when we talk about infrastructure and we look and we stop talk about being friendly and open for business, I think this is another thing. How do we? How do we address this issue of, yeah, this place wants to come here? And I think the vice mayor and and the former mayor have been on GSAC and and talked with economic development is what are the barriers to growth here in Uba City? Infrastructure is certainly one of them. Not it not because we don't want to do it, it's just we just haven't had the resources available to do it. And I think that when we talk about a public works infrastructure, we have to be forward thinking a bit, too. Got to take care of what we have, definitely. But where could we expand that? When if we have this opportunity and there are some fundings that we've never seen before, could we could we leverage those and do something that might attract might attract business, which would be good for all of us?
Did you capture that, Brad?
Did we? Did I miss it, though, just taking care of deferred stuff?
Oh, maintenance.
No, I don't think it's a barrier. I think it's it's just addressing 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 long term. Help me, Diana. You know what I'm saying?
The deferred maintenance, I think you you hit on many cities and counties, actually, because of what's been going on over the last year and a half and not being clear about their budget, have had to continue with that. And some of that was still built up from the Great Recession. So now councils and boards are starting to look at what do we have to address now? And how far behind are we? And I think that's what I hear you saying is now's the time, given what's going on, to begin to identify what are the critical areas that we need to get on top of. Is that?
Yes.
OK, so I have a list. I can't seem to find it on my phone right now, but there's a complete list of SECOC prepares of barriers to development with multiple different categories with multiple examples under each. And I can get that. That might help us out, too. It was very thorough and all agreed with it all. So it'd be nice if we had that. We can pick a few to tackle together.
So we'll make a note that Councilmember Harris will provide staff with a list of barriers that come from SECOC.
Find it.
OK. I just wanted to come back just to make sure we're clear. Anything with more detail on fiber? Everybody is clear that you're talking about broadband, but is there anything else that's in there that that you want staff to look at?
If I could add, it would be multiple things. Fiber, power, everything, because, you know, we're looking at, as he said, we from GSAC. Right now, there's multiple fintechs and things that are looking for not 10,000 square feet, but 200,000 square feet ready to move in offices. They need broadband. They need power. We just went through this with the Uba Center Transit. They're looking for the next generation of facility. They needed power. We had a couple of places in Uba City that made the the top of the list before the selection was made. We're lacking in those. We got to make sure it all falls under that structure. So however you want to put that fiber, power, 5G, I don't know how all those come together, but all of that. And I think Councilmember Harris might have that list, because there was a
I'm looking still.
Little point of clarification, Juan. I know we're talking about infrastructure and power. I think the thing you mentioned, just to make sure some of that is available warehousing and how that ties to that. We probably don't have that piece of it. So you just you want to keep that as services under that line item. Infrastructure, and you're talking about services, power services, making sure that we have the we're reviewing those and those are available.
Well, it's actually having the lines there, because like with the next gen Transit Authority plant, we had to have the high power lines near the site
Correct.
in order to do that. So I'm not sure how we capsulate that. But I'm not looking at a service as being provided. I'm making sure that we've got the infrastructure utilities there. If we're talking the same thing.
I got it.
OK.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because I see the things from GSAC, and they are really comprehensive. And it's, you know, we don't have the buildings and things, so we really don't have to go to the secondary step until we get those in. But we need to make sure that the infrastructure is created, so when those are built, they can be tapped into at the service level.
Exactly. Bog Stewart last night, we approved that that's they're going to be building industrial parks and everything is part of that build out. Boom. If it was built out today, we would probably have people relocating here. But we're still years out. But so that's the things I'm talking about.
It's building, again, more comprehensive foundation that not only meets current needs, but anticipates future needs. I do know that a few of you talked about under fiber, the importance of it, considering that there might continue to be remote work. There might be remote education that that, you know, who knows how that's going to unfold. But some of you were talking about making sure you have the capacity for people to have the tools and access to the internet to be able to do work.
Right, Juan. Thank you for bringing that up. Within last year, with the experience of having to, you know, maintaining mostly quarantine in our homes, we learned that we need to use those that had access to do the remote work and found that there were parts of our city that the wireless services available are not really good services. So is it a responsibility of the city? I think it's not necessarily because those are provided by, you know, the the service companies or whoever they are. But is there an opportunity for the city to provide free Wi-Fi services in certain locations? I think there's an opportunity for that, for remote working, for students and education, either, you know, K through 12 or Uba College or community colleges or what have you. Because I received requests from community members that they were having problems logging in and doing the work for their children and or college students were struggling. So that's an important issue. I think that if we can explore the aspect of wireless services, not just the fiber, but it's all connected, interconnected. And and finding out where those weak areas are in the city and maybe really targeting where we can improve that.
Again, I think part of that, what we're talking about, is a wobbler. I think some of it goes under business friendly.
Right.
So as we co-mingle, for me, the infrastructure piece, at least I was mentioning, was more of the of water, sewer, those types of things that those businesses are looking for. And of course, fiber is part of that. But again, some of this is business friendliness. Some of it is just, how do we get this stuff in the ground?
I think we we got that one.
Public, public, public.
Thank you. Doing my job.
We're a partner. We go way back.
Okay, so first, online, are there any comments under Public Works?
No public comment.
In the room, any comments?
A dumb question. You know, with the Bog Stewart plan, you know, actually going to happen? And I'm sure the city's planning on additional types of things to, as we continue to grow, are we looking at our infrastructure, water, sewer, what have you, you know, for what might happen 10 years down the road as far as capacity?
Yeah, definitely. You know, I'm sure Diana could spend some more time and maybe offline could get that information to you. But yeah, I think there's water and sewer master plans. And as these developments present themselves, there's definitely some forward thinking. I'm not sure if it's 10-year thinking or 5-year thinking or 20-year thinking. Again, I'd refer that to Public Works Director, but I'm sure you guys can connect at some time and chat about that.
Because it just takes forever to get this stuff done.
That and money.
Yeah.
Did you want Diana to comment on this?
I think maybe they can have that conversation and we can keep moving here. The police chief's here, though.
I just wanted to ask a question, because I see where you're asking the public and everything, but I don't see the staff getting any opportunity to feedback or ask questions when we're making the lists. So I have a specific comment, if this is the time or place, to go back to the public safety, because it kind of concerned me what you said, Councilmember Esmondola, when you said transparency. So that's a big buzzword for us in law enforcement when you say transparency. So I'm kind of curious is what you mean by that?
Thank you, Chief, for asking that question. I'm thinking of it in the terms of the work that we do. So the technology, the type of technology that we use in public safety, the rules behind why we make certain decisions, and really more so of engagement of the conversations within community, community policing, the enhancing of the neighborhood watches, that's what I mean, more of the transparency and working with a variety of community. I'm not inferring in any manner that our policing, local policing, is not being transparent.
Thank you.
So I want to be clear about that.
Well, I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment? Certainly, it was never an intent to not have staff, so I apologize if we felt it was only for the public. We want to hear from everybody, you know, especially those who are going to be tasked with implementation.
Right.
I wanted to discuss the fiber part, fiber optics or whatever, getting Wi-Fi throughout the community. So we, the city, or the cities involved with water, sewer, roads, we're not involved with Wi-Fi. So are you saying we're going to step up, we're going to pay for the Wi-Fi for the citizens of our community? Or we're going to ask AT&amp;T, Comcast, whatever, to help pay for the Wi-Fi for the citizens of the community? Are we going to get, you know, we can barely afford what we have right now, just in water, sewer, roads, infrastructure, employees? And now you're talking, you know, fiber optics and paying even more money. Where are we going to get the money? So are they going to do it for us? Are we stepping up and are we going to do this? And another thing on infrastructure, the city has infrastructure in place. And throughout the years, when a subdivision is made, the developer pays to hook up to us and extend the lines, water, sewer, so on and so forth. And then when it's all done and over with, they give it to us and then we take care of it and maintain it for the rest of the history of the life of the city. So are we saying that we're going to tell the developer, okay, we'll pay 50% of the water and sewer lines to put in there, you come build it, we're going to pay for that? So we got a lot of money that we want to spend and we don't have it right at this time. So that's just some questions I'd like to bring to council, saying, is this your plan to spend more money that we don't have? It'd be great, but I'd like citizens would like to be paying higher fees in order to have that happen. Thank you.
Through the mayor? I want this one. I think that number one, when we talk about extending fiber, is it necessarily going to be all on the city or not? Progressive cities, in my mind, up and down the state, are partnering with extending fiber, et cetera. So I think it's an effort for us to stay competitive with other agencies and other cities and just business. So are we going to shoulder the full load? Doubtful. Are we going to shoulder part of it? Would we be in partnership? Absolutely, if they present themselves and they make sense. As far as the development, again, once again, there are opportunities and there are mechanisms by which the city could make a conscious decision, and it would be up to whoever's sitting on the council at that time, to invest in infrastructure and stretch it and then pass those costs on to the development as it happens. The other thing that's happening, and you may not be aware of it, Manny, is that we're looking at some substantial influx of revenue from some of these COVID-related acts. We don't really know what all that is, but I think what we're signaling is if that money becomes available, we want to program it in such a way that it benefits the city and the community. So by highlighting it as an interest, which is really what we're doing or a priority, we're just signaling to staff as these are things that are important to us. So I would, go ahead, Mr.
I was just going to echo on to the fiber piece. It's interesting that smart cities has become a real drive in jurisdictional and city culture. And we actually have, Diana and I are in active conversations with a few folks right now that are willing to bring fiber to our city at no cost to the city. And so there is really an interest in that. Now, fiber is the infrastructure. Who ties onto the fiber is really where you're talking about, folks like AT&amp;T and other folks. How you get that access is much different than actually having that infrastructure piece. And so I've been on three months, I've probably been on five or six calls that are just fiber-related.
Thank you for adding that on. I think that that's exactly the reason, bringing up the Wi-Fi and the free services, was exactly to those comments that the mayor and our city manager is, that for us to be a city of choice or smart city or other factors, we need to be looking forward and thinking ahead in how we get there. The solutions are not always defined exactly in this conversation. Manny, as you know, these conversations occur within the executive team and the budget hearings and all those other things that we're going to host here in the coming weeks. But having access to free Wi-Fi in certain areas where in the community it is needed and potentially can help with our workforce, help with businesses, help with healthcare issues, because so much of healthcare issues are now internet or access remotely, you know, business services. There's so much tied to this that that is why it's under infrastructure.
Other questions?
Continuing on.
Oh.
You turned that way. Be nimble. You know, understanding how the infrastructure works and who actually owns it is a huge part of it. And there already, when it comes to the fiber, ATT is the leader in this with partnerships. And I'm sure Councilwoman Esmondola can tell you through the schools to get things out. The burden of that is typically shouldered by the business community. And there's a lot of government programs that come down from the feds, things we do not control. So, you know, we're setting priorities. We're not talking about spending money. We're not talking about spending half for an expansion of a sewer line or a water line. We're talking about the forward-thinking of our community and our goals and priorities. And you really have to understand the process, who owns the assets and how it ties in, because at the end, there are access points for end-users from water, sewer, broadband, Wi-Fi, you know, from all the providers, okay? So again, just want to bring it back to, we're here about priorities and objectives, not about spending dollars and cents today.
Thank you. Mr. Cardoso, did you, you asked a couple of questions. Do you have any follow-up that you would like to add to that? Or are you okay to move forward in terms of the response to your questions? Okay. No, I think, I'm sure the council is pretty interested in hearing from people who are online and people in the room. And obviously, there's so much going on that we're not all going to know what's in play. So I think it's a good point to ask questions, because then, as the council members respond, they also inform people who may be online about what's going on. And I think this is a, it's a very dynamic time when we think about the federal and state funds that are coming to cities and counties, because there are a lot of priorities and it ostensibly is designed for infrastructure. So this is the time, and it may not come again for 20 years or more, to begin to look at things. And I could understand why people in the community might think, wait, what's going on? Am I going to have to pay for that? And right now, I think as Councilmember or Vice Mayor Shaw said, it's a time to put priorities up, it's not a time to decide, but to get everything up so that then the staff could go back, do the research, come up with some ideas and start presenting them back and forth. And then there'll be a process for decision-making and input from the community. Okay? So I think we covered that piece. Community development, thoughts from the council? Anything you want to add to that or you're missing or what have you?
Mark's smiling at me right now. I tell you, annexation, I can talk about all day long, but I won't. But I won't. I won't. I won't. But I've spoken to Mr. Moody and to Diana and to Spencer about that. And I definitely think that that's way at the top, because based on what this council did last night, and hopefully what the supervisors do in a week or two with the Bog Stewart, the day after that happens, you'll be able to stand at the corner of Stewart and 99 and be in the city, but yet be a few blocks away from Yuba City High School and be in a county. And I don't think that's a smart way of using our resources, and I think it's very inefficient. So I'll just leave it at that.
Very important for you.
Yes.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I think for me is making sure, again, and this is going to be one of those that I'm calling a wobbler, is when it comes to business-friendly and community development, you know, I think that we owe, the city deserves to have a fully-staffed and operating community development department. And I think that over time, at no fault of staff, it's just difficult to recruit people, just changes, et cetera. If we really want to get into planning for the future, dealing with appropriate smart growth, if that's what you want to call it, all those things that are up there is that we got to give them, the staff and the tools, to be able to do that. And I would say that over the two-plus years that I've been on the council, I know what a challenge it's been in that arena. And I think it should be a priority for us is to work with that group and fulfill the staffing needs that they have so that they can do the job that they're supposed to be doing. They're doing a great job with what they got. I mean, I know how busy they are.
Did you capture that? Full of style, okay. No bias there, right?
I would expect Ben to be adding things to that list. Go ahead, Ben.
You have the power of the pen, but you got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Other thoughts about this section?
I just concur with the mayor and what Ben said. I think it's important for us to have an economic, a thriving economic or development in economic services and how the staffing ties to that. And that is connected to so many other systems within the priorities that we're speaking of. That is really, it's hard to say that none of, you know, just to kind of weigh it a little bit, I think that I'm weighing this one a little bit more of a strong importance comparatively to what we're speaking of the others. But when I go put my dots, that'll really show the support.
Ben, could you add that there was a statement that conceivably, community development and business-friendly could be connected? We could decide as we go through, but that's what I'm hearing a few of you say? Okay?
Juan?
Yes.
A question, because when I look at community development, you know, we're talking about the growth of the city, the annexation, the overall master plans and such. The last bullet up there, we're already a diversified community, we're very inclusive. I'm trying, I just want to understand where that bullet's coming from and what is implied there, because is there an expectation under community development to, you know, be inclusive of mayors who are wearing blue shirts, you know, on a Wednesday? You know, I mean, I'm not tracking that, because, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion should be really a part of quality of life things. And it's really one of the backbones of our community, anyway. We have a truly diverse community that gets along, works together. I mean, we're like a model city in a lot of that. So what is meant by community development with those?
I can comment, because I was doing the interview, and then the person that brought it up can comment. But in the context of the interview, the point was made that, in fact, there is diversity. And how might the city begin to capitalize on that diversity, particularly in terms of businesses and outreach? Because we know there are big businesses that add tremendous value to the community, but you have potentially future businesses that are going to be popping up. And how might, through community development, you provide the support to help people in those businesses either understand what the process is or even why this is a good place to locate your business? Because you might have people in the community that would value what you bring, if you're a restaurant, for instance, or some other things like that. So that's how I heard it when we were doing the interview, but I'll leave it to Councilmember Esmondola.
Sure. I think your point about quality of life is probably of a better place if the discussion to occur. Vice Mayor Shaw, I do agree with you on that. I think what I have learned in the last, at least in the last year, and within the work that I've been doing with private businesses and multiple other clients, I really see that, you know, the city has an investment opportunity for valuing more of the DEI framework. And in that investment, it doesn't require a ton of money. It requires an idea that, whoa, wake up, everybody, that we increase, part of this is kind of like what Mark was saying, it's one of those wobblers that I don't really, it could fit in the community development, it can fit in quality of life, it just, it fits in all those areas. And in that is about raising productivity, it increases employee commitment, it accelerates the achievements of the goals that we're trying to achieve. And so it's the diversity. We often talk about the equity of how we produce things. And inclusion, I think that, you know, making sure that we have the community and the different thoughts of ideas that come into play in that. So I think the move to quality of life probably be a better place of the discussion. But that's where I was seeing it. I was hoping that we pull in some strategies that I'm often seeing in the private industry and other governments that are being used, and they're quite effective, quite, quite effective. I've heard Councilman Harris talk about it from SECOG. You know, there's committees and sections of all. You know, there's committees and sections of all this. So I think for us, as we're building, you know, my hope is that we build a supportive, retain and grow workplace, businesses and community. And DEI is part of that framework.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, because I was just trying to figure out. I would, again, either quality of life, a lot of the things you say in that actually go under business-friendly, because the business attraction rules, expansion, they're good for any business. Doesn't matter what's going on. So really, going back to some of the programs GSEC has even offered that we'd love to get up here, they're taking people located within the, basically the downtown region of Sacramento, and they've been putting them through technology training, and they graduate after so long. And they just did their first class a couple of months ago. And I think there was a total of 40, and they already had jobs placed. I think that really rolls down to a different category, because community development, I just don't think it fits there. So I would be fine moving it somewhere.
Through the facilitator? I just want to remind council and public, this was my lens when I read the information. So I put this list together based on feedback that you provided to Juan. And then I read and put it in sort of the buckets that you see it in. So this was from my reading and context as I was interpreting the information. So I think it's great, and I appreciate the direction. I just want to remind everybody, this is Dave Vaughn's perception of what I was reading and how I was trying to encapsulate those thoughts.
Thank you for adding to that, because I was thinking of it outward-facing when we were doing the interviews. So I think that provides more detail on that. And I think the process of my capturing it and then Mr. Vaughn going through it, make sure that we have another layer of objectivity around putting up those things as well.
You can tell, huh? You know, when I first read that diversity, equity, inclusion, I thought it didn't belong up there. Because why do we need to specify when we already operate that way, anyway? Or at least we should be. I think that may have been what you were talking about. But Juan, when you clarified, it made sense to me from an economic standpoint, because I think we are, we are such a diverse community. And it's one of the best things we have going, I think. And if we have an opportunity to deliberately focus that and leverage it for economic development, and at the same time enhance and bring awareness to these cultures, we'd be crazy not to. Look at the benefit that the seed parade brings, right? So there are all these other cultures out there, I think, that are probably present, but they're underrepresented for whatever reason. And if we have an opportunity to bring them out of the shell, if they want to, and so we can celebrate them, I think that's important that we do that. But as a general rule of doing business, we are not, I'm comfortable, everybody in this room, we are not, we don't advocate not doing that for anything, under whatever category you want. But for an economic development part, I think it might play a role. We might probably could use some boosting in there in that regard, so.
Many cities are actually looking at, how do you leverage some of that? As you're saying, and it's all tied to the business case. And I think you see that now, and there are some areas maybe of the community. And it's just diversity of economic areas. It's not diversity in terms of race or ethnicity or gender. It's just, you're capturing something that could add value, and that's part of how you move, I think, forward.
And there's, yes. And there's also another thing, she mentioned SECOG. Reason we're on that is because there are policies that are, at least potentially, policies or procedures or ways of doing business. The classic example would be putting a freeway in a certain spot, but yet you've just sequestered a whole segment of your population unintentionally, right? But it has an adverse effect. So if we have an opportunity, it could be a completely different conversation, but if we have an opportunity to examine ourself, to see what maybe we have done unintentionally that would kind of disadvantage certain populations, no matter what color, whatever, I think we have an obligation to at least look and find that out. Again, it could, maybe it's not our own goals and priorities, but I think if we have an opportunity to do that, it would be smart of us to do so. So we don't want to, we don't want to disadvantage somebody unintentionally or disregard or undervalue where they're coming from at all, ever, so.
Based on your last comment, it starts to build more of a relationship to moving that under business-friendly. Did you have that, Ben? Or leverage opportunities?
And when we develop policies, maybe we should start considering, as our punch list of considerations before we make a decision, consider that. Is there some populations or some people out there we might be disadvantaging or being unfair to unintentionally? What's the unintended consequences, if any? But at least consider it.
Yeah, many states are, as you're saying, are beginning to take that approach.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. That's well said, and thank you, Vice Mayor. Thanks.
I know we want to check online to see if there's any comments about community development and any of those items under that.
So we actually have a comment going back to the fiber discussion. This comment is from Angelica Corchado. She says equitable access to reliable internet is a challenge that healthcare systems have seen heightened during the pandemic, particularly for rural areas to receive access to telehealth.
So just, was that Brad's? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And Angelica's from Center Health, so representing there.
And I think part of that gets magnified during COVID, because people were having conversations online with their doctors. That's how they were getting treated or going through things. And that makes it hard if you can't have that ability to communicate or goes out.
Just a point of information, I was just conferring with the mayor. And we talked about who's doing things and whose responsibility. Part of President Biden's infrastructure bill that he's trying to get through is fiber and high-speed internet for rural communities and rural areas. So see, again, it's where we can put it as a priority, but we may not necessarily have to pay for it.
Right. Yeah. So we checked online. How about within the room? Any comments, thoughts, points of clarification? Okay. Now, I know we're planning lunch at 12. We've been going right at it since 10. Do you need a few minutes, or do you want to just work until noon and then take our break there? Okay. I want to be sensitive to your energy. Everybody's drinking coffee there. All right. So can we move on from community development? Yes? Okay. So now we're into quality of life. We have, and again, this was a suggestion of some of you about moving homelessness in there and then identifying other things. In this case, the example was the bike path. But maybe looking at other ideas that you might have that enhanced quality of life for the city and the community area. So members of the council, anything you want to talk about there? Maybe additional ideas?
I have one, and it's, again, it's going to be one of those wobblers, as the mayor keeps calling, because it fits into multiple areas. But it's very simply, keep Yuba City clean. That's going to cover the homeless issues and the camps and the shopping carts and the trash and the boarded-up blighted buildings and everything under the sun. Because you can, literally, last night when we did the shopping cart order, I, six blocks away, drove over, passed four shopping carts, turned upside down, laying on the side of the, that's just one example. This morning, driving through, you know, there was a person camped out on the 99 cent store. Then you go a little bit further, there's another building that's boarded up, and there's trash everywhere. Quality of life, if we take pride in our city and ask the community, "Help us keep Yuba City clean," I mean, it covers a multitude of things. And it's taking not only pride in your city, but it's taking ownership in your city. Because it is our city collectively for 70,000 people, and we need to take care of it.
Your point then would be, I know it's more expansive than quality of life, but specifically you're talking about the, like, trash and.
Take pride in this, yeah, take cleanup or keep Yuba City clean, take pride in the city, however you want to do that, but it's, you get the idea.
Sounds like a PR campaign.
I saw that in the '70s, and there was a gentleman on horseback that had a headdress on.
And a tier.
And a tier.
But you know, you could even, we're not, it's not the place, but you could even go even further if you take out our homeless folks, because they're some of the ones causing that. If you, if they came and swapped out a bag of trash for a voucher for a hamburger at McDonald's or something, give them a little thing to wear or whatever. And same thing with, I think, I was thinking about the idea with our chiefs for prepared, emergency preparedness people, we should all be up there. And if we even have to go door-to-door passing information and give people the resources, the one-stop shopping, like a brochure or something, to get their kit together, have their plan in place with their family. You can even have the little stickers saying, like the "I voted" things, and get a community, and we all put those things on almost every day and show that. And you just basically help get the word out. We've written that down. There's a lot of things we can do, again, probably not the time or place of taking a minute to talk about it, but there's some ideas there that we could really get, help get the word out and lead by example, so.
And that's towards the emergency.
Yeah. Yeah, I.
And I agree, I agree.
Something like that, something creative.
A few years ago, when we got the word "go."
Yeah.
No, no, let's just go. The assumption that all of the members in our community are internet-savvy or have internet is mistaken. So the idea, I always thought, Sean, that if every refrigerator in town had that sticker on there, where to go, you know, but the packet idea, I liked that as well.
Something. And have them, anyway, we're going down a rabbit hole, but yes, we can talk about that at some point. I'd like to, anyway.
So it would be, keep it clean. But you're also talking about some form of messaging and marketing around, that's creative around some particular topic area. And maybe, you know, how to do that. I think that's what I heard, is that correct?
Well, we could probably do it for a lot of things, but Dave's idea of cleanliness, which is, you know, it's a creative way of saying code enforcement, but that's fine. Get people buy off on it. And I really think it's important that we spread the word and lead by example to get people's plans in place and make sure they have them. Chiefs done a great job getting it out there. But there's so many different angles. If we had, if we can just point it in one spot and communicate that out with a deliberate, huge effort to do so, I think it can only be a good thing, so.
That's a great idea.
Happy to help out with, if we can think, come up with a plan of some sort.
Well, and there are a number of cities beginning to do that when they address certain problem areas that they're trying to change in their community. So great idea.
Well, and Juan, to your quality of life on the bike path, everyone knows how I feel about that. The more, the better. And that's a particular thing where you may not see the immediate impact or value, but it's there. Because you go out there in the mornings or the evenings, and you talk about having a diverse community, that is just, that's just the coolest thing in the world. And some of us are working on expanding that, and I think that's a great idea. The homelessness thing, we could sit here and talk about that. That's an all-day, obviously, so I won't go down that, but. Quality of life, to me, encompasses so much. And, you know, it's schools, it's parks, it's safety, it's business, it's just people thriving. I don't want this, what I'm going to say is going to have the danger of being taken out of context. But, you know, this issue of homelessness and the burden that it's placing on the community is one that even when I was walking neighborhoods was certainly top of mind. And I imagine when Sean and Wade were in the most recent election cycle, it was probably something that you heard. And I know that there's a lot of good things going on, but it's not enough. And we cannot be complacent, say, wow, we got all this great stuff going on. There's great stuff going on, but the numbers are still increasing. And so, you know, we really, if quality of life, if one of the concepts or aspects of quality of life is helping these folks that are, you know, food insecure or not, you know, having a place to live, then we really need to make sure that we take advantage, again, and leverage what we can to try to get those folks who want a hand up and who need a hand up out. And so I do think that is definitely a quality-of-life issue. I think the other piece to that is, again, and maybe Sean and Wade would weigh in on this, was just, you know, what's going on as you look around in neighborhoods? You know, you've got a lot of issues. And our, you know, poor Lincoln and Eric and Ben with his crew, you know, a staff of two trying to take care of whether or not someone's, you know, got a decrepit, and Chief Landon's crew as well. I don't want to make sure they're, I know they get involved with this as well, is, you know, what's going on with property? You know, if we can't clean up some of that stuff, then I think, you know, neighbors start to get upset. And then neighbors get upset, and then they flee. Hey, I don't want to live in that place. I'm not, I try not to take too much heed in what I see on social media. But I witnessed an exchange, and I know Councilman Kirchner was paying attention to this as well. You know, the bowling alley just got sold. And what were the comments? Well, you know, this city's trash and this and that and 500 other things, you know, about the city. Well, we had no dog in that fight. I mean, that's a private property issue. But nonetheless, it's a perception. And so managing the perception, whether it's through, you know, outreach programs or whatever, and engaging the community to help with some of these things, I think is important. But when it comes to quality of life, to me, it's an easy one to put up there. It's certainly extremely important, but it's very difficult to quantify in my mind. I think a lot of these things all wrap into quality of life. And I think by just throwing, hey, we want to have a great quality of life, I just don't know how that translates to staff where they can put some metrics around measuring it, where some of these other things I think are much more measurable and going forth. I think quality of life should just be inherent, but enough from me.
I'd just like to add that I see quality of life in just a general overview of promote healthy and purposeful living, which including recreation, health index, you know, how healthy is our community, the levels of education, the sustainability of employment workforce. I think the mayor, you know, we all struggle with where does this really fall into? So I see it in that overview. I do agree that messaging, having conversations, Dave, the city manager, mentioned that. And I'm looking forward to that way of us communicating. But it really is about promoting health and living for purpose in a community. I also see it as providing opportunities for youth to thrive. We have recreation programs, we have recreation programs. And so we could look at other things to include in that. And in that, perhaps, you know, again, I'm thinking of partnerships, not the city doing this alone. You know, internships, workforce training, soft skills, all these other areas. I'm not sure where affordable housing ties it all into this. This is connected to the homelessness. I know that, you know, we continue to look and explore for affordable housing. Somehow, if we find ways to increase the supply of affordable housing. As development occurs, yes, it's important to have all types of housing, because we all have different affordability levels. I completely understand and respect that. There is a community that cannot afford. And sometimes homelessness can be prevented if there's a place for them to be able to rent and live in or buy. The homelessness is a topic that we continue to work. You know, we have had some meetings with our city manager and. know, we have had some meetings with our city manager and our city team. I, one thing that we're not clear, and we're going to figure this out hopefully, gentlemen, is exactly, I know it's a fluid number, but exactly how many homeless community live or move around within the city limits. We're not, it's not completely clear yet. So we're going to get those metrics to help for us understand as a city, what's that flow of in and out? And are there specific areas in our city that perhaps this is much more of an issue than other parts of our city? And how then it enter, how it affects different essential services that we provide within the city? So that's part of the committee work that we're discovering and looking towards. So hopefully we'll be able to present more of this information in the near future. It's not, it's not an easy, not an easy solution. But my focus on this is to reduce the number of individuals that are homeless. So establish a base and then reduce it.
I hear two things. One, again, is just the approach to it. And then it talks about, I think I heard you say targeted strategies once you get data. So, yeah. Any comments to quality of life online?
Yes. We have a comment from Dr. Tony Dotson, who is our Yuba College president. She says, I appreciate the city considering how they can support their residents and their businesses by building a strong workforce through post-secondary education. As we emerge from the COVID-19 pandemic, our community is struggling with an employable workforce. Yuba College maintains strong career technical education programs who have been open face to face through the entire pandemic. It would be great to promote and strengthen these programs to increase available employees. I would appreciate exploring together how we might be able to build the employable workforce we need to elevate Yuba City. As a good friend of mine says, we all do well when we all do well.
How might we capture that on the list?
I've got to comment to that because, again, having a fair amount of conversations with the school district, at least here locally, first off, I think workforce development's huge. I think we have to move in that direction. But I also know that they are getting a lot of funding, whether it's the Yuba City Unified School District or the Franklin School District. I, you know, I'm not as familiar with Yuba College, but I do read the paper. It sounds like they're getting money as well. I think where, where they could, where they want to seek our assistance in messaging that, and I think it's great, but I don't know that that's really a mission of ours, right? I think we encourage it, we support it, but, I mean, that's, that's just where I'm seeing it right now. And that's based upon conversations with district personnel as well. You know, they, they're trying to figure out, okay, where do I go with this? Totally support it, but it's not, it's not, in my opinion, it's not a critical mission of the city of Yuba City. Again, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't encourage or support it. It's just financially, I don't know that we're going to commit resources towards, towards that. It's not a mission of the city, in my opinion.
Others?
Yeah, I would agree in that because we're more of a partner because there's all the mechanisms out there. I mean, freshmen get two years of, first two years of college free now. Is, came in this past year, there's all kinds of things going on, but we're not in the business of education or career technical training. We're in the business of public safety and infrastructure primarily, quality of life. And, and so I would concur. We're a partner, but we're not an educator. And we got to make sure we've got our right role in that. I want to go back to quality of life and Councilwoman Esmondola, something you said, maybe start thinking of where quality of life really needs to be because it's inherent. It is overall what everything feeds into. So my first level was, hey, maybe that's part of a mission statement, but maybe as part of our BHAG, that big, haughty, audacious goal, to have this huge picture of what our quality of life is, of what we want for our city and our residents, because it really is not a separate priority. It's what all the priorities are leading up to. And then when you look at homelessness, the homelessness, my personal opinion, I think it belongs under public safety because let's look at what we really provide. As a city, we don't provide mental health. We do not provide housing. All of that's the county. We really deal with it at the public safety and level. It's what we have to deal with. It is either code enforcement, it's law enforcement, or it's fire. You know, that's really a lot of the places we deal with. We're not providing housing. We support RHA, not a problem with that, but that is not our job. And I think a lot of times we look at these goals and we start our priorities and we go, hey, we want to do this, but we got to get back to what is our role and what is our partnership? Just like with education, we're not educators, we're partners, steer people towards it. When it comes to homelessness, to me, it goes under public safety because that's really where we deal with it. And, and I think the quality of life can go up to a BHAG.
Juan, real quick?
Yes.
One last thing, along with the, the quality of life. In the short time I've been on city council, the one meeting where we had, I felt like we had the largest group online and in person, community support was out of a fear that the city was going to disrupt two ball fields that were, baseball fields that were privately owned. And it was amazing to see how important that is to our community. And the consensus in that group was that the only facility that we have available, Blackburn Tally, is just not, not sufficient to a city this size. Now, I am encouraged, when I was looking at the plans for Boge Stewart, that there is plans for some parks in there. I'm hopeful that somewhere in the plans, but I definitely would consider that a quality of life or in our case, a lack of quality, quality of life.
Recreation in general?
No, specifically, again, going, going with what we heard from that, from that public forum, the need for that. Because right now, the, the only facility that they have, or the only place they have available to them is privately owned.
Maybe sports complex?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's the messaging I'm hearing is something along those lines.
Well, and I also heard under quality of life, Councilmember Shaw, Vice Mayor Shaw, I'm sorry. I was thinking ahead of myself and I was thinking that you're describing the moonshot, right? And, and then a suggestion to staff that, that maybe you look at moving homelessness under public safety, but think about how all these other priorities can fit under quality of life. So it might just be a different lens and maybe broader in the way you approach it. So that, did I capture that?
I think that, you know, when a, and this may be something, you know, obviously it's going to take some vetting, but when a staff report comes to the city council for consideration, in my mind, eventually it should indicate this is, this is addressing one of these priorities. If you put quality of life up there, it's probably on every staff report. And I think that's what you're trying to say is, and that's not to say it shouldn't be there, but let's say that we're, we're, you know, stretching a diffuser line down, you know, that's an infrastructure. Okay. This is addressing council priority XYZ on, on infrastructure. Does it help with quality of life? Well, yeah, you better be able to flush the toilet. So, you know, but when you get to that high level, I think all of everything's up there. To me, and that's, I tried to say that earlier as well, and you did a better job than I, was everything's a quality of life issue.
Was there any follow-up comment from the person that was, no? Okay. Comments from inside the room around quality of life and other items within that? Thank you.
Quality of life, homelessness. Last five years, I've been an advocate for the homeless, trying to help them. I help serve lunches, whatever it takes, the people that want it. But there's a lot of people out there that don't want it. I see all your comments. They're all great comments. We'll start with Councilman Shaw about, you know, saying let's keep our community beautiful. The community is tired of cleaning up other people's mess. They power wash their sidewalks every morning before they can open their business because there's feces on it. Councilman Shaw knows, for example, they hit his trash cans over by his business. He's got them double padlocked on Councilman Esmondola's comment. All you got to do is get in the car and drive around town. You can do a head count easily. They're everywhere. They're in Bel Air, they're up and down Pluma Street. Just, and it's, they just don't sit there. They sit there and they dump all their trash out in a six-chair area. And then they stay there for hours and then they don't even pick their stuff up and they leave. They just leave half of it and it's up to the community to clean it up. So the homeless issue and panhandling is out, it's up and beyond and gone. So it's just a suggestion, instead of having one homeless resource officer, you guys need about five because that's what it's going to take to get everything cleaned up. You know, I have a little extra free time now and the homeless, like I said, they're everywhere. They're at Sam's, they're at Bel Air, Pluma Street, Shopping Center on Bog Road. They're not just in, you know, on Second Street anymore. They're in all highly established railies. You know, I go grab a donut, Crinkles Donuts over there on occasion, a couple, a couple of times a week, go over there and visit, and they have to power wash their sidewalks. And it's not from the chickens. And, you know, I hear a lot of complaints and I say, well, I'm not a councilman anymore. You need to talk to them, but I'll spread the word. But the community is tired of cleaning up other people's messes. And if you guys, council can do something to help the community, like I said, you know, it's always money, it's always involved, but that poor one homeless community officer that we have, we need four more plus him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you add, suggestion to add more? Are they liaison officers?
Homeless liaison officer.
Homeless liaison officers. Okay. I think if there's no, oh.
We do have one more comment.
Please.
So this one is from Angelica Corchado. She says, Sutter Health and Adventist write out partner on a community health needs assessment every three years. We conduct focus groups and key informant interviews with community organizations and members. Quality of life is highlighted in this assessment. Many responded to having access to transportation services to support individual mobility is a necessity of daily life. Without transportation, individuals struggle to meet their basic needs, including those that promote and support a healthy lifestyle. Examining the number of people that have a disability is also an important indicator for community health in an effort to ensure that all community members have access to necessities for a high quality of life. Qualitative themes include navigating the bus system is difficult for the elderly. Limited transportation options create an obstacle for those seeking healthcare services. Dial-a-ride has limited access and low-income residents struggle to afford bus fare. Bus schedules have limited services on weekends.
Any responses to that statement?
As Chair of Transit, I can tell you that our fares are some of the lowest in all of California as far as what they can do. And even in the COVID environment where the bus capacity was reduced, I know Transit was not being combative with anyone nor kicking ones, you know, okay, we've exceeded, we're going to kick you off. I know there's a lot of things there. So I'm not sure if people are aware, but it sounds like we need to get this organization paired up with Transit so that we can make sure they have all the proper information. Because even when it comes to, like students, I mean, they ride free from Yuba City Marysville out to the campus in Marysville on Linda. So there's a lot of opportunities. Again, it's like everything else, it's not perfect, but I think we need to get those paired up. And the person to reach out to would be Mr. Keith Martin, who is the director of Yuba Center Transit. That would be my response to that. But I had one other thing, Juan, and I know we're getting into lunch, but I personally haven't heard from much of our E-team at all. And we're talking about quality of life and whether we do it as soon as we come back or we delay and move forward. I personally would like to hear from our E-team, what does, what does quality of life mean to them in Yuba City? What's going to make a difference? Because we're trying to set priorities, it's going to tie into the budget. And we've heard from a couple of people online, we've heard from a couple of community leaders, but I haven't really heard from our E-team other than Chief Landon. And I would personally like to hear what your thoughts are because I've said it from day one, you know, we work for you guys and we work for 70,000 people. We just have the job of making the decisions so that we can get this massive task of quality of life done that we're trying to do. So I would love to hear from them.
Thank you.
Juan, before you get to that, let me just respond to that or add to what you just said, Vice Mayor. And before we move on to that, and then I'm going to need a break. One of the things I learned that I didn't know before, the Feather River Air Quality Management District provides some grant funding to subsidize lower fares through the transit. So perhaps a conversation, I think our role or my role is to help make sure that those people are talking, as you mentioned, and that is there a way to improve the transit or the transportation system to help with the, the needs of elderly community is, is important. So I just want to add to that. And, and the last is with former Councilman Cardoza, that the issues of homelessness did not arise just this year. They've been for over many years, as you mentioned. And so you were faced directly with the challenges when you were a council member as well. So understanding the complexities of this area is really quite challenging. And so having, I am one of the founders of the Homeless Consortium. So we're, we're able to now bring forward close to $5, $6 million of services and collaboration in the region area. The city's a partner in that. And so the answers are not going to be quick to fix. And I empathize with community that are having to deal with the cleanup. But I think Vice Mayor Shaw said it well earlier. Let's find ways to clean it up, our city, and keep it clean and beautiful. So I fully support that.
Thank you. So at this point, we'll take our lunch break and come back 30 minutes from now. You can use that or you can use your phone or you can use your watch. 30 minutes from whatever device you use and we'll be back and--
Lunch--
Online.
Yes. Lunch will be available in the center room for everyone in attendance.
Good for everyone in attendance.
Okay, we're ready to begin. And we'll pick up on customer service unless there were any other comments from online about quality of life?
No comments online, but I do believe we have executive team members that are prepared to present.
Okay, thank you. And that was a great invitation by our Vice Mayor. And certainly to be able to get additional input. I think encouraging audience participation, particularly from the E-team is a great way to do it. So do we have somebody from, that wants to speak? Or did you have anybody in particular that you were talking about or just over, over sweeping statement? General, got it. Please feel free to step in. Add your comments. Oh, is he? Okay, good.
There we go. So I, I left off, I think, in my thoughts where the conversation left off and is that is, you know, so many of these things that we're talking about contribute to quality of life. So for me, when I think of quality of life, I have a hard time saying, you know, defining it concisely, but to say it's really, it's a feeling. And so as a, as a resident myself, you know, when I wake up and I walk out my front door, how do I feel about my city? And so I think as we start to, start to narrow down our focus on our priorities on four to six items, I think that's going to be how we're going to address the quality of life.
Thank you. Other thoughts from this side of the room?
I was trying to think of a name, but I, I'll just, I'll just go with Brad McIntyre. I'm gonna talk a lot because Chief Landon is gonna take notes. And I probably won't be quite as, so here's my scoop. I would say when it comes to a quality of life, I have a couple of things written down and I, I think one that Council's done a very good job with is, and working towards is creating partnerships. And I think there are, and we should as a city, encourage others that are already doing things that are important to the quality of our life is to reinforce those individuals. Perfect example that I would use is that we talked about, keep Yuba City clean. Well, Say Love is a very huge partner in our community. And I think as a city, we should try to support them as much as possible, whether that's with people, money, whatever that is. But they, they are, I guess, for the best way, they're in it for the right reason and they certainly would, would support that. So it's, it's cleaning Yuba City and its partnership. This is one, the next one is probably not gonna be as politically correct, but in my mind, as it relates to homelessness, I like the Council, I, I listen to a lot of people out there and I know that I've been involved with homelessness a little bit, but I, I personally classify that category as vagrants and homelessness. And so I added up there, you know, vagrants versus helping those who want help. I was in, I was in a meeting the other day and somebody from the consortium who I believe runs the consortium, a gentleman, very knowledgeable, question was asked and, and Yuba City PD was in there, it was like, well, how many individuals are out there that are, that don't want help, you know, that are vagrants? And, and the number was about 75 to 100. And so my, my, my desire is to focus on those vagrants that seem to be creating 90% of the problem. And I know that looks to PD, which also the increased reinforcement. And here comes maybe not the so political side of it, is that our district attorney, I think, is failing us. And so I think that there's needs to be motivation to help our police do that. Community center, when I, when I talk about a community center, sometimes people think basketball and basketball hoops, which is okay, by the way. But I, I, the community center is something, it's, it's an event center. It's a place for people to congregate and have events. I, I certainly have been to enough events where we've all seen each other and I think we could do better as a city. Not, not, not anything against the fairgrounds, but I certainly think that is a, a place to gather would be, would be better. I think we could do better promoting the arts, which there's already a group out there that's, that's, we could partner with, music as it relates to some type of event center, possibly down on Plumas, and, and I'll be pushing for that as a executive director. Also, the last, you know, recreation is always to me a quality of life because it creates opportunity for children that have very small front yards, that are obese. It creates open space. It, the recreation in itself creates the ability to handle conflict in our recreation, handle conflict meaning as far as being a part of a team, understand what being a, a part of a team means. I think we lose that sometimes in our society and it also teaches us how to handle conflict. And I would say one of the things that we have a problem right now in our society is that we don't have just debate. We, people get very upset and that's part of, I think, just a lack of being able to experience conflict and disappointment. That's my box.
Thank you. I believe you added community center there? Are we ready? Any comments from Council? Okay. So customer service, we didn't have a lot of bullets under that. Anything in particular? I know that it's, it's something that, as I interviewed the Council, certainly it's a strong value and, and one that you all talked about and one that you all said, you feel very comfortable that the city's continuously trying to improve on customer service. Is there anything else you would add to this?
There's nothing I would add, Juan, but I was looking at them, I would combine community development, customer service and business friendly because they are all, in my mind, connected because the overwhelming customer service is a deliverable that we're trying to do across those. We need community development and then we need that business friendly part, so they're all interacted. So I don't know how you relabel those, but I think they wobble very closely together.
I'm gonna make an assumption and maybe celebrate a little success. And one, you can go back on this journey with me and Diana might be able to as well. There, and I'm talking about internal customer service here, not external, is that the city of Yuba City that, that I was a part of back in the day, sometimes did not seem to work cohesively amongst themselves. In the business world and I guess in the governmental world, there were silos. Each department was striking out to try to do its own thing and then there may not have been as much collaboration. I think over time, and this is where I would give to you my impression is, is that, that they work well together. At least, that's the appearance. And if that, if that's truly the case, then man, keep going because if you get into something that's different than that, my department's more important than that department or I'm, you know, I'm getting this and you're not getting that, it becomes deadly. So I think internal customer service is just as important as supporting each other. It's not just, you know, the outward piece of, you know, the representation to the citizens, it's also how you treat each other internally.
Thank you. Did you get that piece, Ben? I would say, because I was, I've been around a long time, I do remember in 2002, the alliance between police, fire and other department heads, where I observed that internal collaboration and internal customer service starting to take form. So I think it's been part of the values of the organization, sometimes much better, sometimes challenged, but, but as a value, I think it's something I've seen the leaders strive towards.
I think as we move towards, again, here comes this, what I'm gonna assume is going to be this influx of funds. You have the potential, again, unique and probably unprecedented and probably maybe once in a career type of money coming in, everybody's gonna want some of that, right? How do we fairly distribute that? What are the priorities under which those, those monies are spent? Because there will be, there will be competition. And so that's, it's, it might be more teamwork than customer service, but anyway, my point being is that working together is gonna get you a lot farther than hammering about. And we've got some, we're gonna have some choices to make, it seems like or it sounds like.
Thank you. Other comments from the Council?
No, I do think that Vice Mayor said it well, that, that seems to be like, again, a consolidation to a different priority at this point. And it does feel like it's more community development, economic services, I'm calling it a little different, but I think we're in the same page on the, the conversation. But customer service is important. We, we have, we strive to always serve with excellence and service. But as standalone, standalone priority, I, I think we just need to move it around.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we ready to move to the next item? Thank you. Comment online?
No public comment.
Further comment, question? Okay.
Hey, I just wanted to comment on customer service. I was here back in the day where it was, each department was their own. And then we had a Jeff Foltz era that got us all to work together. And it's been that way ever since. And for customer service, we have one of the best communities for customers. Our city is one of the best cities, I'd say, and, well, we'll just, we'll be, we'll be nice, I'll just say the state of California, I could say the United States, but we have all the employees step up when it is needed, whether there are issues in between or whatever. When there's an issue, we all work together as one. And same thing with internal. It's a great place to be, great place to work, and I just wanted to comment saying that we have the best employees that anybody could possibly work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from the room here? All right, then we'll move over to business friendly. I'm making a public note and I'm, I'm sure Mr. Juan, you are as well, that we're beginning to see a trend of looking at how community development qual, or customer service and business friendly can fall together and that quality of life might be the overall big mission. So that might help us when we get to the voting part of it, but I, I'm seeing how that's starting to form. So under business friendly, thoughts from the Council in terms of, in addition to these items or any embellishment of these items on your part?
You know, one of the things that we've been talking about with the task force and we talked about it prior as well is, you know, we've got retention, expansion and attraction, but it's, we also, in the business friendly part, you know, we have to have that mechanism of, you know, just, you know, when the, when a business needs help, you know, they don't know, you know, who to go to. It's not necessarily we're trying to retain their business, we're trying to expand their business, but maybe they have a question and I'll just use, you know, we, we were nimble and did the outdoor dining in like 30 seconds when COVID hit. But if they show up, we've gotta have almost that liaison that is that mediator there to, hey, you don't know where, who to talk to and what to do, I'm that person. So I'm not sure where it falls in, but you know exactly what I'm talking about, Dave, because we've talked about it with the task force.
Community Development Services is where I see that. We're talking about that front door to back door.
Yeah.
Liaison individual. I don't wanna tip too much of the budget's hand, but you will see a position being presented in the 2122 budget that relates itself to a person in Ben's department that will be that liaison to help business development services and those individuals that need to move forward and need help understanding permitting or anything, whether they're local and, whether we're retaining, expanding or doing attraction, this individual will help lead that cause under Ben's leadership.
It just, it just hit me, the one word, and it's so simple, I apologize, assistance. So it's, it's retention, expansion, attraction and assistance because that's really what we're after is to, front door to back door.
And, and you're comfortable with assistance being under business friendly or do you think it should be under community development? I'm sure you see it as both.
It's a wobbler, but, but with the focus of being open for business, I would put it there because it seems to logically fit with those because talking about retaining them, expanding them, attracting them, about just simply assisting them, you know, it fits there to me.
Great. You have that, Ben? Okay. Other comments, thoughts?
I have a dream. I do. I have a dream that, you know, when someone wants to expand their business or they wanna come and do business in Yuba City, that they, they, they are met with assistance, a liaison facilitation, that they don't need to go pay somebody to, to shepherd their project through, through the municipality, that, that as a city, you know, we're, we're staffed appropriately. And I'm not talking about somebody that goes out and, you know, puts up a booth and tries to attract business. I mean, I, I've, I've seen that fail here way too many times. It's someone who actually rolls up their sleeves, his or her sleeves, and, and says, hey, you know what, I'm, I'm gonna own this and I'm gonna help them get through the process. And, you know, for us, that's gonna differentiate the city. I've seen it in other cities. It can work, it will work if you get the right people. For me, you know, from now operating a business for 11 years and doing so in different communities, I understand how different communities deal with that. When you have issues, it's not to say that we don't do a good job, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying we have the opportunity, I think, to again differentiate ourselves. There are businesses, we've talked about attracting diverse businesses, we've got, you know, we're in this, this mode right now where I think that, that people are getting out of major metropolitan areas and looking for places to come and live, there's support things that can happen for that. And for me, it's creating that scenario on open, open is, open for business means that, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have to call up the councilman and say, when's the next meeting? They told me it was gonna be a week from now, but, you know, I'm not hearing from them. I don't want, those are the kinds of things that go, okay, well, this person's got options, they can go someplace else. And right now, there are businesses that wanna come to Yuba City and I, I think we're dealing with those businesses and we've got a bunch of them coming, which is nice. But there are still those obstacles and they, some of those are, are obstacles that we can remove if we make it a priority to be truly open for business. And I think that in and of itself will continue to help the community thrive.
I wanna be clear, you're, in, in terms of that recommendation, I hear it as an in-house opportunity as opposed to maybe potentially a business trying to find somebody out there that can help them understand the system. You're saying we want people in-house to facilitate an easier transition around potential bureaucracy or?
Right. You know, I just don't think, I think if, if we're open for business, that's our role. How do you do business in Yuba City? Okay, how, oh, you got a project. I mean, I've experienced it. I know it's available out there, we just have to find and fund the right person to do that. You know, there's a bunch of folks running around in the outside out here with their, with a, with a business of, hey, you know, I'll take your project and I'll make sure it gets through. Eh, not, you know, to me, that doesn't make sense. I mean, business shouldn't have to do that. If that's the case, then they can go anywhere. And I just feel that that's an area that when we are truly open for business, we embrace that. And if we are in a situation like we're going to be, I believe with, again, with this infusion of stuff, then we need to take, you know, whatever recommendations out there. I hate to call it an economic development manager because that has a, that has a, a slick willy connotation to me. I really like the, you know, here's someone who's a facilitator, here's, you know, whatever you wanna call it, but not an economic development manager that goes around pats themselves on the back and says, yeah, I brought this business in. That's not the real world. Businesses come to Yuba City, they're doing their own, they're doing their own research before they come, the big ones. But the final thing I will say is retention of existing businesses is probably as much or more important than going out and trying to attract new. Not that attracting new isn't important, but we have a bunch of businesses that if we can, can help them grow with, from within, they're here already and, and they can stay. And we need to put as much emphasis on that, in my opinion, as we do, again, setting up a booth at a trade show, trying to grab somebody that's probably being tried to grab by a bunch of people. We've already got this group. Help them.
Ben, did you add the retention piece? Okay.
Juan, can I, can I chime in on that?
Please.
And, and it's a perfect segue, Mr. Mayor, on, on, on business retention. On one of the objection, objection, objectives, regional partnerships, Beal Air Force Base. Anybody that's lived in this area an amount of time knows that they've been an enormous partner for this community going back to when it was Camp Beal. The time that I've spent on the, the BMLC, and I think Sean can, can agree with this, you, 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 you create partnerships out there with people in management positions and you get to know them and you, you, you get to ask what, what, what their needs are. And I have no doubt that Beal is an enormous financial benefit for the region, but I think in recent years, for this specific area, it's gotten less. And, and, and this is just talking with the people that work out there. If given the choice, they'd rather go out the Wheatland Gate and live in places like Lincoln, Wheatland, Rockland, Roseville and Sacramento, if given the choice. And that's been a shift, because when I, I was born out there and, and when I grew, growing up around town, this is where they came to do their business, in Marysville for that matter. And, and I know with, with COVID, we just hit the big pause button and it stopped everything. And, and, and part of that was, was the BMLC and, and the connections we had out there and the relationships. And I understand that the Vice Mayor and the mayor are part of a committee that goes out there and, and I think that those relationships, we, we need to get back to retention, just like the mayor said. And what do you need and, and how can we serve you better? With the, with the, the main gate. With the, with the, the main gate being closed had nothing to do with the fact that they don't want to come this direction. That was a staffing issue with security, and it was up to Colonel Clark to make that decision. But I think that's, that's, that's a huge asset that, that we need to retain. And we need to, we need to figure out how we can get them coming this way rather than going that way.
Are you comfortable with having that be reestablishing the, the relationships? Okay. Thank you.
I have one other issue, and it goes back to something we chatted about earlier. You know, what's the city's lane when it comes to this? Because there are other regional partners or other local partners. You have this Chamber of Commerce, which is on its, on a really good trajectory, in my opinion. They're providing a lot of assets. We have GSAC, we have the EDC, we have all these different entities that, in theory anyway, are, are trying to work in the direction of taking care of existing business, perhaps attracting new business, et cetera. So I, I think as we talk about business friendly, there's, there's an internal role that the city plays. And then there are partners who are out there who have a common interest. And it's aligning all those so that we're not duplicating or we're, and we are taking advantage of what those other, other agencies have to offer. But, you know, when someone comes to the counter or picks up the phone to the city manager and says, hey, I want to come and do business, or calls the council people, which is happening a lot right now, I want to come do business in your city. We're able to address that. We don't have to look to somebody outside of the organization to address that for us.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes.
What I wanted to add on part of it, we kind of discussed it, I think, earlier. This is a question that I'm often asked. And trying to, I think the role of our city is more of a partnership, not for us to fully develop it. But there is a concern about workforce and the availability of the workforce for these businesses that are needing to be retained or for new business to come to this community. Because they do consider those factors into, can I stay? Can I survive? Can I still be that business? I mean, I, I get asked almost every time, if I go to a restaurant or a store, the question that repeatedly gets asked of me or I'm talking to an employer is that we need employees. We are hurting for the workforce. And I think there's an opportunity, as mentioned by Councilwoman Kushner, is the partnership of working with, I know we work with education, but work with other entities to develop a strong workforce and talent in this community. I'm not saying that the city needs to take on the full responsibility, but certainly some have a partnership.
What would that look? Help me understand anything more than encouragement. Because I'm struggling to get employees. But I certainly don't think the city has a role in helping me get those employees.
Not, well, I think that for certain, I will say this, Mayor, you have a great advantage comparable to other employers because you understand the city and really the services to the city. I think that's a great advantage. I think the, what I hear from businesses that don't have that perspective or experience is where do I go find these people? You know, I can say, well, yes, you can go to One Stop. You can go to the Plus Group, you know, all these employee entity type. And then there's a, and then the other follow-up, well, I've done that, and it doesn't seem to be helping. What else can there be done? Is our education system preparing the kind of workforce that we need, you know, with the soft skills, et cetera? Are we looking for, you know, if a business needs a, a specific type of skill set, are we, are we promoting that in the conversations? Because we did that when we did the economic, we, we had a workshop, I think, 2019 on the economic development of our community. And we looked at the potential jobs, what those jobs would look like. And so it really is, I think, a strength in the coordination, GSAC, Economic Develop, EDC, our Economic Commission, and partnerships to see what is our piece of that to help develop workforce in this community. I think it's very disjointed at this point. And so.
I guess I'm still struggling. I don't mean to interrupt. Is, what do you see the city's role in developing a workforce other than, than, you know? Again, as, as staff's looking at a list of things that they're supposed to be working on, what can we do as a city in workforce development?
So one area that our city, and I brought up on the youth opportunities, for example, other cities, we've done this before, where we've done city government projects for students to come in through our program to understand. With the city government works and workshops, we can do internships. We can, you know, partner with Yuba College. We can partner with trades. We can, you know, to build that workforce that is not there yet but will be needed, that's the, that's where I see the opportunity.
I might be able to.
Add to that?
Yeah. What I've seen in other cities is that you've identified this potential role as assistance. So it fits under part of that assistance. And then you look at, how do you have the influence to connect people? How do you have the influence to, if somebody's asking about what, what, you know, what are employees like in that area? Will I be able to attract them? You, you can help facilitate that partnership amongst all of these different entities out there so that in essence, your role is kind of helping to shape the vision. It's partnering, but it's influencing and, and, and then telling the story. And, and that's how I've seen other cities do it. Some do it really well, some don't. But it's, it's trying to build what you're saying is going above and beyond on customer service in these areas and helping to try to streamline ways in which it makes it easier for people to figure out whether or not they can find the resources they need to drive their business.
So Juan, can I add to that a little bit? I just want to remind council, we are an employer of something north of around 300 employees. So some of this workforce development is self-helping as well because we also have to develop our own workforce for folks in public works and water and sewer and parks and rec and all the services that we provide. So I just remind, we, we're one of those employers that are, that are in need of finding a workforce throughout our organization.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think I understand what both of you are saying. I, I, but I think appropriate would be to, I don't think we have the responsibility to, to play a role in workforce, but I think we, we play a role to partner with people who do. But that's, I think that's the differentiation here.
I am saying that though.
When we, when we say vague things like partner with Yuba College on a punt, what does that mean? Really? We can, we can encourage them to do their job and to get out there and get the word out in the hospital or the high schools and things like that for, to get, encourage people to take advantage of their programs. We can't snap our fingers or develop any type of program or task staff with creating a workforce. But what we can do is, is do economic development so we can, and create these quality of life issues we've talked about to encourage people to live here, to make sure that our city is attractive for folks to not only live here but move their business here because they're not going to do so if we are crime-ridden and all dilapidated. So if we fix homelessness, if we, if we lay a proper groundwork to streamline processes for businesses and developers to come here, that alone will attract the people here who hopefully be employed here. But I don't think we need to lay the problem with there's no employees at our feet. I don't think it belongs here. We do have a role to, I think we need to be a part of the conversation to partner with folks, but it's not our primary responsibility, in my opinion. Directly.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Juan, you've already partially used the word that I was thinking of as I was hearing the dialogue. And we put up assistance, but I think it should be assistance and connect, connect, connectivity. Okay? Because that's really, we're the conduit through that. And, and I fully agree with what you said, Sean. It's, it's not our role. It's exactly what I, I told the, the dean there of Yuba College. You know, great partnership, but not our role. We're not educators. And we need to, through the connections that we have, most everyone probably saw it on TV where GSAC got Aggie Square going in downtown Sacramento. And it was in a underserved area. They're going to develop it. They're bringing in, partnered with UC Davis, couple of corporations. They're going to have medical training, all these things going on. The best form of flattery is plagiarism. So we shouldn't be trying to reinvent that wheel. We shouldn't be in a business that we're not in. But we need to have that connectivity to bring those programs here, which I've been having a few of those conversations to go, hey, how do we get this a little further north into our community and let the people that have already put it together on one scale, put it together on a separate scale? That's really our role. And that's a lot of what our role is, is, as members of this council, is connecting, connecting our constituents to who they need to talk to and what they need, you know, how they need to get their answers. So it goes back to where the mayor started. I can think of, of, of the project that comes to mind this past year is the KFC. You know, the KFCs are a dime a dozen, so to speak, across America. You know, there's, there's not anything special about this KFC versus the one in Sacramento, Roseville, their franchises. They have their models, they do everything. They shouldn't have to spend thousands of dollars to pay a consultant to get it through, you know, our city. They should be able to walk in, here's what KFC gave me, walk through it, go through, have that person that saves them. Now, that's the key. We're getting business friendly again. We're saving the developer and the business owner money because they're not having to hire someone else. We facilitate that all the way in. And then as they're going, well, we need workforce. Well, you know what? Here's our connections. And that's really our role. Contact One Stop, contact Chamber, contact this, contact that, and make sure that those relationships, even with Beale, all of that comes together through one conduit. And that's really our role. And I totally agree, we need workforce. But the workforce development has been disrupted because of COVID. Everybody's went, you know, underground, stopped doing things in person for the most part. Not everyone has, but, you know, it's, it's kind of fallen by the wayside. The second thing that's hurting our workforce right now that will straighten out is people are not going back to work because they're making more money staying at home because of the additional money from the government. We've got about nine states already that have said enough's enough, get back to work. So I think you're going to start seeing the workforce turn around as more and more states come on board with that or they, or the feds finally cut that. So, you know, if you look at a snapshot in time, we're hurting. But again, back to what is our role? And I think it is making it as simple as possible and connecting them with the right people. And that's our role.
Thank you.
I, I think this is one of those areas that the, the term workforce is being considered the only over-conversation of this. It's, it's, I'm using workforce because that's a simple term for, for me to, to share with you all and the community. But it really does tie to the retention of businesses that are lacking ways to keep employees employed. Or even the city, we have a retention issue of employees. And so, and describing workforce, our employees. I do agree that we need to partner with all of these entities that are related to the subject. We've had discussions about economic development. We've had discussions about how so many people are commuting, commuting out of our community and live here but don't work here. And so part of a thriving community is to keep people who live here, work here, and spend their money here, to be frank, with taxes. And so if we're not considering the topic of economic or, let's say, just for the lack of, let's remove economic out and call it development. If we're not looking at development and not including the workforce or talent or employees in that, I think we're missing a strong part of that work or effectiveness because it's the people that do the work. And if we don't have the people for whatever reason, could it be COVID? Could be lack of skill set? Could be multiple reasons. But if we don't have it and jobs, employers that want to stay here aren't going to stay long, or those that have opportunities to leave will leave, and those that don't want to establish with us because we're not ready for them. So it's a consideration.
My, my thinking on that is that when this idea, which has a lot of different perspectives, and I think it's all landing in the same area around what you want to do to retain, to grow, to offer, you know, that kind of attention to helping people. I think that that could be done pretty well by the, the E-team in terms of kind of taking what you're talking about and spending some time analyzing it and looking at it and, and seeing what are best practices out there because that works as well. So let me come back, any questions online to this business friendly piece?
So from Tony Dotson, one of the things that makes a community attractive to live in is schools, and that includes community colleges. Exploring how we can work together doesn't make you responsible for it. It just opens up conversations about how we can make Yuba City as attractive as we can. Maybe the partnership is Yuba College giving as much as we get. We won't know that if you're not willing to explore.
Well, I'm going to speak on behalf of the city. We're always willing to explore. We're always willing to have dialogue. I think what we're talking about is a lane. And everything we've talked about in regards to workforce development, all that is, is all important stuff. I think is, again, what's a priority of the city of Yuba City? What are those key things that the city is tasked as a municipal entity in providing? And, you know, we, we, there's a lot of stuff we want to do, and there's a lot of expectations that come to the city. Some of those are, are real, and some of those, as we found out, especially over last year, are expectations people have of us that we don't have control over. And to, I think the vice mayor said this before, we can only control what we can control. We want to work, we want workforce development. I think each one of us is involved in that in some, you know, I, I volunteer on a, on a career tech board. We're all there. It's just, if we have a finite amount of resources, then we have to make sure that we're delivering or providing those resources for our key missions. And I agree that, you know, economic development, everything else. But we talk about roads, we talk about water, we talk about sewer, we talk about public safety, police, fire, et cetera. I mean, those come, those come in, in line. And so what's workforce development? Yeah, we have a retention issue for, for our own workforce. I get that. But we're not a training agency. Can we provide internships? Sure. But our mission isn't to go out and develop a workforce, in my opinion. But I, I hundred percent agree with Dr. Dotson is that, you know what? If, if there's a linkage between Yuba College and us, we absolutely want to explore it. But don't have an unfair expectation of us getting a bunch, you know, a bunch of our finite resources into that pool when those, those resources are already existing someplace else.
It's important that we talk about lanes again, like, like Mayor just said, is what is our responsibility? What are we here for as a city government? Right? We, we, we determine that, and then we, then we establish priorities. We're here to establish priorities and, and our responsibilities. So this, the relationship and discovery and discussing things goes right under the building relationships. It's already there. So we put it right under there as, as an example. But I don't think we're, we're talking priorities today and trying to give a clear direction to staff as we move forward. And so that's what we're focusing on, is what is our primary responsibility to the citizens?
And this is, ties right into that enhancing partnerships on a regional level. So it goes right back to that subject, which is a priority.
Well, again, I think what, when you have these items on the list, it will be up to the staff to come back with different thoughts around each of these areas. And, and it's clear that you want to emphasize that, that the city be clear about its role and how all of these things fit into that. So we had one comment online. Any questions or comments in the room?
Okay. So I'm Sandy, and my husband and I own the Happy Viking. And I'm also.
And I'm also president of the Downtown Business Association currently, until they let me go off the board. But when you were talking, I think Mayor Baumgarten said it correctly. Is I think for me, as a small business owner, we have an opportunity. My, my husband and I have been trying to since probably November, we've had an opportunity. Well, during COVID, we bought a dirt lot for, for the outdoor dining. And I appreciate the city that was right on top of that to make sure that we were able to stay in business. And, and they were fast and proactive for us on that. But I think what we find, I know that the city is business friendly, but I don't think like the 79 businesses that are downtown know that the Yuba City is business friendly. I don't think they know some of the services. And I can say just on, on my husband and I, we're trying to find, if we don't buy the building we're currently at, we're trying to find a building because we want to expand. And we've even had the discussion where maybe we can expand because there's nowhere here. So we're going to maybe move up to a different, not still have this location, but have another Happy Viking in another city. And so those are kind of those things that we struggle with. And when you talk about having, I think, Mark, you touched it the best is having that one source person that can kind of help direct as we have those questions, not having to pay somebody else to consult that is not from the city. Because I don't think it's, we don't need somebody long-term to consult us. We just need somebody to help point us in some of those directions that the city, I think, could help and make sure they retain those businesses with that. So, and I, I just wanted to talk, talk on the workforce. I think for me, as we've got 45 employees, so we're, we're hoping to expand to 7,000 square feet. So that means that we're going to have to hire quite a bit more employees right now. It's probably the worst time to be thinking of expansion. But I go back to as a business owner, that that really is Sutter County issue. Sutter County has a one-stop, they have all these programs. And I think that that, I would, I would expect as a small business owner that I wouldn't want the city to be managing that. I'd really want the Sutter County who has the funding and has the, the staff there to be doing it. I think there's an opportunity to, for the city to maybe help with that in a way of just saying that this is the pressure we're getting from our businesses. But I think really that, that belongs to Sutter County and, and fixing those, those issues there with, with workforce and trying to help the businesses so we can stay open. I think that was all I had to say, so thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? Department heads? No? Okay, I wasn't sure. All right. Nope. Okay, so are we ready to move beyond business friendly to the next item? Fiscal responsibility, revenue opportunities, thoughts that you may have about that, additions, what have you? Just going, going?
Oh, no. Let someone else talk. As it relates to fiscal responsibility, I am always, I think that, you know, the city's done a, a good job of, you know, maintaining its reserve as well as, as taking, you know, a, a good conservative look at, you know, what, what the current revenue sources are and understanding what the pressures on those expenses are. And especially as we've gone through this ad hoc committee process, which the rest of the council will be involved in here in a very short period of time is fortunately, right now, we're okay. We're going to come to you, the city manager and his team is going to come to you with a, a balanced budget. And that's, that's a good thing. However, the, the known expenditures, deferred maintenance, all these other things that have been presented to us over the year are certainly raising the awareness of the fact that we're going to have to, we're going to have to consider revenue enhancement opportunities, whatever they may be. We have a workforce that we want to retain. We've made that perfectly clear. We have facilities. Heck, we even may have an event center. Look at Brad, he's happy now.
He's writing it down. Mayor said.
That's right. So, you know, for us, I think not only, again, this, these one-time monies that, that would be coming in, but we need to look at some, some longer-term options that may present themselves. And we have to do that in almost a brainstorming fashion in regards to, everything's on the table and then we get a chance to take a look at them. So the, some of those are going to be very difficult discussions. You know, they're not going to necessarily be popular. But at the same time, I think it's important that we continually take a look that we can pay for what we provide.
Thank you. Other comments?
Two words that come to mind. The first one is transparency, but I want to replace that with clarity. And the second word that comes to mind is alignment. And the clarity part, as we've gone through the ad hoc committee for two years now, and it's going to be coming before the, the council here very shortly. You know, you pretty much had to go to school or be my line of work or be Spencer and his team to understand that budget because it's that thick in sub-accounts and departments and everything else, and it all gets convoluted. Part of the process that we've been working on is bringing clarity to that because there was a lot of things that the department head staff, everything was done as it was told to them. But there was things that were being directed to them that, that brought the, the, the muddiness of the financials. That's why we got questions from the public when we were actually running for office. And so, you know, clarity, you know, it shouldn't take a PhD, so to speak, to be able to figure out what we spent money on or how our finances are for the city. And then alignment, back to what the mayor said as we started today. As we're looking at things, our budget, when we came in a couple of years ago, had the appearance that it, the budget aligned with our goals and priorities. But we need to make sure that everything we're doing aligns with our priorities and, and our mission, our job, which is the, the health and the safety and welfare of our city. So we got to make sure that alignment is there. It's great to have all the other stuff. But when it comes to physical responsibility, clarity and alignment.
So would fiscal clarity and then alignment of budget or alignment of strategies?
Alignment or, you could call it physical and budgetary alignment because they need to, they need to line up. We're spending, last night, we got, we're talking about the diffuser and how many millions of dollars it's going to cost when that has to be done. So that should be tying back into, oh, well, that's our infrastructure, that's water, sewer. This is the justification. The community senator, well, we haven't quite got to that one, other than, you know, it's down here a little bit. But we need to be aligning them up. Sorry, Brad, he gave it to you, I countered, so. Alignment, alignment with priorities.
Able to pay for what you prioritize. Okay. Other comments?
I have a final one then, before you go to the public is, you know, we got out a little in front of our skis with a prior city manager in regards to talking about taxes. And I think that the reason that we were out in front, or he was out in front, was because there's some work that needed to be done just to make sure that our budget, you know, accurately reflected the alignment of the priorities. But also, if we were going to go out and seek some sort of a revenue measure that we could sit back and comfortably state to the public, these are the reasons why, and it's your choice whether you want to or not. And I think we're getting to a point, and I'm certainly not sitting here today saying we're coming out with a revenue tax measure, but I think we're getting to the point, as a city anyway, where we can say, if you want this, you may have to consider that. And I don't know that we're alone in the state of California in asking that question. So I, I don't feel like we're, you know, we're on the bleeding edge of that. But, you know, we have these, these missions, but we're also talking about some things that may not necessarily be missions. There are programs that we want to do, but if we're going to be able to fund those, there has to be a funding mechanism for that.
How, how might you want that captured by, by Brad? Would it just be, again, the alignment? Or is it?
Ability to pay is what I'm going to call it.
Okay. Thank you. That's very crisp.
It was more than one word, sorry.
Did you have a comment?
I, I just wanted, I was thinking of enhanced governance and fiscal responsibility. One area that I have shared in my time in the seat is I, I do believe that our commissioners and different roles need to be a little bit more engaged in part of the goals and priorities of the work that we do because they're an extension of our council. And I think that Dave, city manager, already mentioned to this that we regularly assess functions and progress of how all of this that we're putting together tie into that budget, to the fiscal responsibility. And that as we're making this progress, we modify the plan if there's need for modifications.
Thank you. So, okay, online? Any comments from in the room?
Concerning maybe thinking about a tax initiative and it costs the taxpayers money in the community. We have a brand new council. How about dispensaries? It doesn't cost the taxpayers anything and it's quite a bit of money would be coming into the city. I know Marysville is doing very well at this time with their dispensaries. And just, just a thought, and it won't cost taxpayers anything and it's a business. Thank you.
Are you okay with adding a suggested idea from the community would be look at dispensaries? Yes, no?
It falls under the broader category already brought up.
Any revenue category, Sean, what were you saying? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay. So we're ready to move on to employee engagement and culture? Is that you, Ben? I'm going to try to speed this up. Thoughts, comments about this particular topic area that you all identify? We've, we've hit on retention quite a bit thus far. Any area of that you're looking at, culture, we've talked about with customer service and other things? Mayor?
I, I think the city manager mentioned it early is, is I think our, our, our workforce is at a point, you know, coming out of this COVID pandemic of, you know, maximum efforts and, and they're tired. I, I hear that, I've heard that from others. And so to celebrate their success, provide them with the tools, equipment and personnel that they need to adequately perform the missions that we're asking them to do. You know, I, I think as far as a priority of employee engagement and culture, that, that is, certainly it's a value. But as a, and as a priority, as far as, again, making sure that we're taking care of the things that they need, as I'm speaking specifically of the E team right now, to, to lead their functions is extremely important. But I don't know, again, once again, other than an employee engagement survey, I don't know how you necessarily gauge that. I know those documents exist. We use one in our company. But, you know, again, if we're looking at measurable things, you know, maybe that's something that, that the, the city manager and the E team can come back to us. How do you, how do you measure that so that we know that we're actually supporting that? I, I know from the colleagues up here, we value the heck out of what's going on. But at the same time, I'm not sure that that, how do you translate that down? You know, what's real? We had our first employee awards dinner in what, two years or whatever? And, you know, so it's those kinds of things that are meaningful to the employees so that they understand that what they do for the city and what they do for their, their coworkers is, is rewarded. Or it's not rewarded, but it's valued.
So you might want to add, I heard surveys to, to find out the perspective of employees. I also heard kind of resume some of these celebrations to.
Certainly support whatever the, the staff thinks they need to do to make sure that their employees know of the value that they're bringing to the stuff that we do as a city.
The other item I heard was tools so that people could get the job done? Would that fit under employee engagement or somewhere else? I could see it fit under there, I just wasn't sure.
Well, we've talked about tools and other, and other places. But, you know, so to me, it's a wobbler. It's, you know, if, if you're working in a department and you're ill-equipped to perform what you need to do, or you're doing it with a piece of old equipment, or there's something out there that could make you more efficient. You know, if we, if we can facilitate getting the right thing in the right person's hands so that they can do their job better, I think you're only going to be, you know, doing everything better. The employee's going to feel better and the service they're delivering is going to be done better, so.
Put, put tools there just because it's okay to have cross-reference? That'll help as you go through the process? Any other items?
Something just came to mind for the fiscal responsibility. The technology needed within the finance department in order to keep all of that information up to date. I don't know if that's a tool factor that just made me think about as the mayor mentioned that. Because we do need our technology, there's a, there's a, I think, a, a large investment in that to help maintain all the records and, and accounting to be up to date.
So we would add that under, we've hit on the tools before, but that might be other, it sounds like you're talking about software?
Software, computers, you know.
We touched on it early on, but I, I appreciate the, the shout out because I know that Spencer was going to kick me if we didn't talk about it, so.
It just came to mind as the mayor spoke.
Yeah, good catch.
We have it back there? Good.
No. Community center.
It's not a community center.
Community center, yeah.
Software to design, no. Okay. So, did you have something, Nat?
Yeah. Yeah. Before I get that, I've heard of trickle-down economics, but this is beginning to be trickle-down ink pen over here with you, Brad. The, the word that, we're talking about employee engagement and culture. I think that there is a word that's missing, and that is satisfaction. Because when you look at a lot of surveys that's done, Wall Street Journal, Forbes, these guys, Money, all these guys do these surveys every year. And these are the top 50 companies to work for in the U.S. How is our employee satisfaction with our team? You know, if we were to put that against the other cities in Northern California, would we be in the top 10 cities to work for in Northern California? You know, so it kind of goes together. You know, you want them to be engaged and have that culture. But what is the employee satisfaction? Are we creating the right work environment? And, you know, I could sit here and say, we absolutely are. The department heads, I know, have got their feedback and they've done a great job. There's always room for improvement. So if we're, if we're not there, you know, how do we get to that employee satisfaction?
Great point. So under the survey, it would be employee satisfaction? Because depending on what you identify as the categories that will help you get the feedback you need. And then ultimately to measure if you want to implement changes, whether you're doing that.
Are we still doing the leadership? I know because of COVID, you know, we weren't able to do. But are we doing the leadership, internal leadership programs and opportunities for employees to participate in those areas at this point?
We have not been doing that. The E team has talked about reinstituting that under the, you know, whatever the new guidelines they are. So we would be bringing something back in next year's budget that would approach that, but probably not on the same levels that the city has used to being seen in past classes. But the executive team was very interested when I first started to talk about that. And we are developing an approach to bring that back in some way, shape or fashion.
I think that adds to that satisfaction and, and the results of the person's sense of purpose and commitment to the work. I think that that's been done for years and I would love to see that continue going forward.
I think you are missing something in there, actually. Because the city, and I think it did it on an ongoing basis under employee engagement. Seems like for a while you had a lot of internal training that, that was supported. And so some of that has continued. That didn't stop completely, but. That didn't stop completely, but, but I know.
It slowed.
It slowed, but that's also one of those values around helping to develop people's skill sets. Okay. So, the last item? What? I'm sorry.
Comments?
Yeah, please.
Juan? Yes? Yes, sir. Chief?
I was gonna let you go to the public and come back to me. You threw me off again. So, just real briefly on the, it's my job to be an advocate for the police department, and part of my job is to make sure that we're adequately staffed. So when I'm looking at the recruitment and the retention thing, we're never supposed to surprise anybody, but as we're looking at how other cities develop their law enforcement, like Elk Grove and Citrus Heights, when they first opened up, they got all senior officers. Right now, we're gonna be losing a lot of senior officers, and we're filling everybody back with recruits. We need to have the middle ground, so we're gonna be coming to you guys here shortly with a lateral incentive so we can try to get the middle ground filled again with some experience. There's gonna be a lot of turnover with retirements and stuff, and I just want to make sure that's covered under the retention recruitment portion.
Oh, I see, under the employee engagement piece?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think you also had, under that retention, well, public safety, but you also had Build the Bench, which was an, an approach to try to expand that in all areas where you're looking at employees. So, yeah, that's another one. Okay. Comments from online? No? Any further comments from the room? Okay. Then our last item, city communication outreach system. One point of contact, consistent messaging, multiple languages. Other thoughts or directions from council in that area? Looks like the process is exhausting, you are. Okay.
Food, comatose, happening. I, I believe that this particular one probably would fit best in the governance and fiscal.
Okay. So you're suggesting this move under fiscal responsibility?
Or, this is a disadvantage of sitting in this place.
What about business-friendly and?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Both business and communication under customer service?
That's, yeah?
Yeah.
So the idea of moving communication outreach, combining that with business-friendly under customer service. I think they're already starting to organize the, the areas. We might be down to five now. We'll see when we vote how that adds up.
Juan, this is one of those wobbles again, because you're looking at it from, you know, communication outreach as far as developing growth business, but you've also got this in the realm of public safety, you've got this in emergency management. It almost, and I, I played with it, it almost needs to be its own priority because it covers so many things. And we can see the need for like a PIO. We can see the need for consistent messaging. We can see all these because it's going to be overarching over everything. But there needs to be proper messaging, consistent messaging, one contact, and we might get it lost if we try to stick it under, you know, business and stuff, because it might be just focused on that. It might get lost from the business side if we try to stick it under public safety. So that's my thinking of why I would leave it as a separate, to make sure we do have that outward, that outward approach.
Your advocacy then is not to put it under business and customer service, leave it as its own because of the importance of that function? Okay.
So when I read this, I read this as an opportunity to be able to have a system base that was system-wide. And so in some cases, it's a tool, right? It's a, it's a tool, so software and a development of something that allows us to have that one system to allow us to do that we don't have today. So I really looked at it from there. Now, as we develop that concept, it is really around a PIO. It is really around consistent messaging through all of our organization. However, the, the thought was, is really having one place to feed information to and from, and that had a widespread outreach. And so I just wanted to share that when I was reading this, this was sort of what I was taking in, and it's no different than risk management issues that we've talked about, whether it be, you know, cybersecurity or other.
Thank you. And I think what we found during the pandemic, at least in some, a number of cities, is that there was so mis, so much misinformation out there that cities felt like, and counties felt like it was important to have a single source so that there was consistency in that messaging. And so that popped up too, and I, you know, that makes a lot of sense. So with?
Hello?
Yes, sir?
I, I think the concept is, is really, you could boil this down to one message, one voice. I, I think that's really what we're talking about here.
Ben, could you add that?
Is, is, you know, formalizing, formalizing, you know, a process so that, you know, number one, the message is, is approved, the message is consistent, and the message is delivered by somebody who can deliver it and to the point of, can deliver it to the whole realm or diversity of our, of the people we serve. And I, I see the chief back there. I know he's been initiating an effort on some PIO stuff. I think the police department with Katie's done a really good job. I know that George does pretty good. But we, you know, what is that one single point? If, if there's a, a city message that's going out that, that all that kind of goes into? And I think that's what, what you're mentioning as well. Anyway.
Thank you.
I think you stepped to up because you were gonna step up.
Just wanted to pass along, currently, we have four individuals, three from police, one from fire, that are in the process of developing a citywide PIO program. They've tended some training. They're getting the software and materials that they need to be able to hopefully fill that mission.
What I do like, what you said was that it is message consistent, approved, and then citywide. I, I really like that aspect. I think sometimes different messages come out, and not necessarily the clarity of the consistency across departments, across organization, and across community.
So that one message? Okay. So, anybody online? And then I'll come back in to the room? No? Further comments? No? Okay. So with that, here's what I'd like to suggest, that we take about a 10-minute break, then we'll organize the sheets, and then we'll come back and start looking at priorities, or at least with respect to some of the things that you talked about. Hopefully, between the four of us, we could figure out what you've already combined, and then look at what we have. Okay? 10-minute break? Thank you. Okay. Are we ready? If I could sing, I would, but I can't sing.
I don't remember that being Don Juan, but, okay. Lawrence Welk, I think that's.
Okay. So I'm going to talk about a revision to the strategy, and then I'm gonna kick it back to the city manager, who will talk about the next steps. So in conversing with the council, it seems like the plan is that the department heads take these items under the headings, and then you come back with your recommendations under the headings, clearly not all of them. What do you think are the top ones that you should focus on for '21, '22? Did I capture that correctly?
Mostly so. I think the, the, the value that we see is, that's where, this is where the rubber meets the road. We could sit up here and say, oh, jeez, let's have this, and we need this, and all 500 things, and then watch all of you just look at us like, are you crazy? This is way too much stuff to do. So I, I think it's in, in all of our best interest to tap into your professionalism, your realism, what you know you're capable of doing, what you know your staffs are capable of doing, and we value having that piece there. We're not trying to punt anything here, and we're not making any final decisions, but, you know, as it relates to the, the five areas, I think we've nailed the five areas down. We've moved quality of life off to its own because it's a big thing that embodies everything. But for instance, I'll use fiscal responsibility. You know, give us one or two things there that, that we think that, you know, that we can accomplish in '21, '22. It's all about quality, not quantity right now. Okay? And that's what I think, you know, pairing the list down from whatever it was to five, and then further pairing those five down to one, two, or three things in there that, that we can really make a difference in, in the community, and, and, and your, that you and your staffs can help, can help drive.
Thank you.
So if I'm hearing the mayor correctly, we will take this work back, pare down the list, put together some goals and tasks and items. If it's metric-related, we'll look at that as well. Bring that back to the council for your review and consideration. That's what we would recommend, but of course, if you don't feel that that is a prudent way to move forward, we're certainly here to listen. You know, Chief, Chief Land is a little disappointed. He's really a dot guy, and so he kept telling me which color dots we were supposed to be using. So I, I think we'll be able to do that as an executive team together, and we will go to work on that. We have a meeting on Monday with Juan, and part of that meeting was to utilize this meeting and that meeting to start to do the work. So I appreciate the guidance and, and the flexibility in putting that together as our next steps. I guess, I'm looking, looking across the room at, at the department heads. Are you okay with that? Wow. Say that again?
You know, I guess I'm just strategizing here. Is this normal business, or is this where we got money to spend?
This is the normal business. This is our, our day-to-day stuff. We don't know what that $16 or $15.6 million is even gonna bring. That would be an entirely separate discussion at a later date. This is just how we're gonna go through '21, '22, knowing what Spencer and his team are bringing forth in the budget. You guys have had your, your take at submitting stuff to that. The ad hoc committee is, I'm gonna say that as an ad hoc committee of two, we're pretty darn comfortable with what's being proposed. The rest of the council, of course, is going to have to bless that, but we're treating anything coming from American Rescue Plan and anything else is a totally separate subject at this point. And so before Chief talks, I just want to remind council, the executive team did meet, we did put together, you know, roughly 70 items associated with what we believe those monies potentially could be used for. Our team is gonna sit down and force rank those into what we think are the top priorities based on three different categories, and so we'll bring that back to you on a separate basis. But to Ben's point, some of them may overlap into some of the priorities that, that you've identified and direction we're heading in. So there may be multiple opportunities there. I, I think that, that sounds fine towards us, is, you know, if you have additional information that we don't have at this point about what might drive some of these, then yeah, please, you know, bring that as part of the, the next session.
Does that clarify it for you, Ben?
Yes.
Chief?
Oh, I just wanted to answer up to the mayor. So our goal here is to pick one or two out of each one and just give you a little less like Dave was, or like the city manager was saying. That's fine.
Okay. No, I, I mean, that's, to me, it would be beneficial to me as a council member to hear what you guys have to say about what's there. I mean, there's a lot of stuff up on those charts right now. If we were to say, hey, walk out, and this is what you guys are gonna do, I, I would imagine you'd look at us like, are you crazy? Maybe I'm wrong. But I think.
You're not wrong.
Huh?
You're not wrong.
Well, I wouldn't think so. So, I mean, I, I think we're, we recognize that there's only, so, I mean, you got day-to-day activities, right? And you have the stuff that we're trying to get, move the needle on, so. I, I feel like in one respect, honestly, that maybe we're, the perception is here, we're making you do our work. And that's not what I, that's certainly not what I'm intending this to be. This is, I need your help. I want to know what you think needs to happen. You, you guys are as engaged in this community as we are. Yeah, we have some decision-making authority, and yeah, we wanna, you know, we want to come out with what's best for the citizens, but, you know, you make things happen, and, and we need your help on this one. But we don't want to overload anything here. Certainly want to stretch, but we don't want to overload. We want to do good things, and we need your help.
And we're here to support the council, city manager, so we'll get one or two items.
Chief's focusing on one or two items. And if we, if we're successful enough in achieving those one or two items, and then we can pick up something else, and we have the resources to do that, then we'll take a look at them. Nimble.
Other comments? Okay. Was there any comments online? So are we at a point where we can conclude? We know clearly what the next step is?
Only thing I would say is if there's any questions from staff. It's been kind of quiet in here today. I guess I'll ask the first question. Expectation on timing? Is this something that, obviously, we want to roll into '21, '22 on, recognizing that, you know, with two council